Order, could I have a roll call?
John Hutzco.
Russ Schmidt.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Juan Wilbar.
Thank you, and if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on June 3rd and one on June 17th. And I know we have approval for the meeting minutes of April 15th on our agenda tonight. I haven't had a chance to read those yet, so I'd like to carry those over to our next meeting. So the first item on our agenda is a public hearing for John J. Gas Station amended site plan on Route 52 and Lake Drive. Do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing?
Yes, we do.
Terrific. Okay, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The last time we were in front of the board on this application in the public was here. We had a public hearing. We had a configuration where we had four pumps, a new convenience store building, a drive-thru, and we had a traffic light shown. And that's how the resolution was written, and that's what we had approval on.
So there was a condition of the resolution that required the traffic light?
Conditional site plan approval based upon DOT approving the light, which we discussed through numerous planning board meetings and site visits with the DOT. In dealing with Brendan's office, we had a relatively high comfort level that the DOT was going to approve that light, and I think we conveyed that to the board, and that's how the resolution was written. After we had approval, we submitted, Brendan's office submitted the final traffic analysis report to DOT. Long story short, DOT denied the traffic light approval. And it's actually, in speaking to the board, it was actually fairly frustrating because we had, again, we had a high level of comfort that they were going to approve it. We had a lot of head nods, but I think at the end of the day, we didn't get in front of the right group of people that actually made the decision on the traffic light. So what we did is we came back before the board, we explained the situation on DOT not approving the light. We made a last-ditch effort to sit down with the correct powers that be to, again, explain the situation with the gas stations, and again, also talk about the additional development along the 52 corridor and see if that future development could help influence the decision on the traffic light, and try to figure out the thresholds required to approve the light. And I could get more into the technical details of it, but there are certain thresholds that have to be met. And based upon the proximity of this proposed traffic light along Lake to the school, the thresholds were fairly high, and even if we did meet those thresholds, DOT did have the ultimate say, and it was basically told to us that even if they are met, there is a highly unlikely chance that it will be approved. So we brought that information back to the board. We brought it back to the applicant, and trying to figure out with alternatives for this site, because the applicant does want to remediate the site, he's ordered to remediate the site, and trying to develop the site that looks aesthetically pleasing, especially since there's going to be so much development along the 52 corridor. So what we did is we came up with two concepts. One is an as-of-right, where we take the existing site, we reintroduce the car wash. It's a three-bay car wash, they're hand-washed car bays with a mechanical storage area. The building facade would be freshened up. There would be an addition that we do propose to the existing convenience store.
So Brian, I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask you to pause for one second there, because I want to make sure that it's very clear why we're back in public hearings. So because we determined that you were not able to meet the terms of the original approval, so it required a traffic light, we're not able to obtain that at this time from the DOT, and it doesn't look like it's in the foreseeable future, the board considered that to be a material change and asked for what the alternatives would be to modify the design here to accommodate not having a light at this site.
Correct.
And because this seemed to be a material change, we asked you to come back into public hearings specifically to say what are the alternatives, knowing that there won't be a light here, again, for the foreseeable future for us to present. So that's what you're walking through now. I just want to make sure everybody kind of understood where we're going with this.
Correct.
So the first, the first option here, I think, is what you have up on the screen.
First option, what we have on the screen, I'm sure people in the public are familiar with it.
Yep.
It's basically a freshening of the existing site, reactivating the car wash. What we did, just to walk you through it again, reactivation of the car wash, three-bays, hand-washed. You can see the queue lanes behind the car wash. It does match the original site plan, and that's how the configuration was back when the site was originally approved.
Okay.
In addition, the convenience store is to remain where it is. We do show an 800-square-foot plus-or-minus addition along the back and along the side, closest to the car wash area highlighted in that orange color, again, for additional storage and mechanical space and cooler space.
Is the hatched area paved, the black hatching paved?
The black hatching is, the original site plan didn't have a loading area for deliveries.
Okay.
So what we tried to do is incorporate a spot close to this door, away from, let's say, site traffic patterns, will allow some kind of a delivery off-loading area. And then the only other major change is we took the canopy configuration, we stretched it, so that we do have typical spacing within the pumps. Pumps are along the same line. We show three pumps. There's three pumps out there now, although you can only really access probably two at a time. So we did, we stretched the pumps out. Canopy is a little bit longer. We stretched the canopy toward, let's say, Archway Plaza. As far as traffic flow goes, all entrances are to remain full access. That's along 52 and along Lake Drive. We don't propose any improvements along 52. All accesses are to remain. And I think part of the biggest factor with this layout is, with this, we, the applicant originally agreed to bring central water across 52 and down to the rear of the property along Lake Drive. With this configuration, that option has been rescinded. Again, this is pretty much going back to an as-of-right configuration and small modifications to the building. The applicant was pursuing this option. We did talk to Brendan about, certainly, let's take a look at the proposal that we did work with so long with the board, and I can get into the second option.
Before you do that, Brian, just, are there any other conditions that would have been in the original approval that either wouldn't apply to this approval or that you wouldn't be meeting as far as this goes? So water, bringing the water across the street would be an example of one of the other conditions. Is there anything else that we should talk about?
I think, well, I think the water was the, was the issue. We do plan to remediate the site as per DEC consent order. Lighting and landscaping would obviously be refreshed for the new canopy. We probably would be adding some lighting toward the back of the building. Those would be detail items, but I think the major item would be the central water.
And you're saying for full accesses, ingress and egress, is that something that also, Brendan, I'm assuming we'd have to go back to the DOT, the applicant would have to go back to the DOT as far as having the two full accesses, or do they not have to do that because this is re-implementing?
Because I think they would need to go just for any work they were doing within the highway boundary.
Okay.
So if they were paving the parking or adjusting a curb line or something, they would need for that, but I think since it was going back to its, you know, back to its original use, you know, they could comment on the access, but they would, they would probably allow it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I guess the only other thing off the table, obviously, would be the traffic light or bond for the traffic light. That would be off the table, I would imagine.
Right.
But this one definitely does not do more, because I think-
That option, the applicant has rescinded that option.
Yeah, that was when we originally, the original proposal, one of the main things we were going to do that was nice for the town, so we decided to say, people back on Lake Drive, is to bring the water across.
Absolutely.
It's almost, I don't know what the right word is, is providing an incentive for us to pick the other configuration.
Well, let's go through the configuration.
Because the other one brings water across, I said.
Let's go through the configuration. We can run through the pluses and minuses.
Okay.
But to echo that, I mean, theoretically, the applicant can just go off and just do this without really involving us. I mean, that is the as-of-right, right? It is the established site plan.
Well, wait a minute, but there are some, there are some proposed minor changes here with the reconfiguration of the pumps and the addition of the, on the convenience store. So Tom, I know that that's permissible under the new law, but I think we probably would still look at it, right, as the planning board?
No, if, if it's an as of pre-existing non-conform, they just get a building permit, restore buildings.
Well, he's talking about adding an 800-square-foot addition to the convenience store and reconfiguring the pumps to stretch them out to have six fueling positions.
But that would be minor with threshold impacts.
No, understood, but, okay.
Yeah, we'd be going through the same mode. We'd go through ARB, we'd, you know, we'd go through the whole range of motions.
Right.
It'd be less of an impact, but there should still be engineering details that would have to be provided.
Okay. Option two?
Option two. And this is the option that the applicant honestly is obviously in favor for, because we did spend so much time with this in the public and with DOT. This option, the, the drive-through remains, the building location and size remains as our original proposal that we had approval on. What the applicant has done in our original site plan approval, we had four pumps. This has three pumps, and we've reconfigured the orientation of the pumps. We had two sets of stacked, stacked pumps, front and back. In this option, we went down to three pumps, single row, and we stretched it across the front of the site. And based upon conversations and input from DOT, what we did is we modified the accesses along 52. So the far access, let's say, near Archway, full access, and we do show a restriping of the center of 52 for a left into the site. And then if you work your way down toward Lake Drive or Lake Road, we have a right-in, right-out, and we'll have a curbed island there to force cars in and out. And then what we did along Lake, the closest site access to Lake and 52 was we had ingress only to force traffic into the site, so we can prevent that left-out to Lake. And then as you work your way around the back toward the rear of the parcel, it's egress only. And the thought is with that is deliveries are off-peak, so delivery trucks still would use that rear access. And then if you're in the drive-through area-
Escape lanes.
-you can make the left out.
Or employees?
Uh-uh.
Do you saw the parking in the back or-
Still have employees in the back, but they're typically off-peak.
Right.
But basically, with this layout, this is, the name of the game is to force traffic onto 52. And the, and the applicant is committed to bring central water across 52, and we do show that. Along Lake Drive, that condition remains in this proposal. And what we did is, that wildcard has always been DOT, and we've, we've been fighting with that issue all along with this application. Brendan's office actually reached out to the correct powers that be, the people we need to talk to instead of being directed to, and they recently issued a letter of conceptual approval for the improvements with this configuration along 52. And what I did is I, I think I passed around a copy of that.
We got an email today, too.
Got an email, too. And this is, this is the application we've worked with the board ostensibly on, and this is the, this is the application that the applicant wants to pursue.
Yeah, but they did also say in the letter, conceptual approval for this, that they were still pushing for the original concept of connecting Archway and this plaza.
DOT, in a perfect world, would love all plazas to interconnect.
Yeah.
And I think we've explored that option.
Right, I don't think that was you saying no. That was the, that was with Archway.
Right. And if they ever decide to come put the board in the application, we can, you know, we can, obviously, that will be revisited again on their half, on their behalf, but-
But at the point in time where that happens, it changes the traffic on Lake Drive again and-
Forces us back into the same conversation.
Right, because the access was going to be up towards where that second egress would be.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, in a nutshell, those are the major site plan changes. That's the reason why we're back in front of the board, is because DOT did not approve the light. Again, with this configuration, there is no light proposed. There was talk about a possible bonding toward a study of the corridor after this is built. Brendan can talk more about that. Again, the applicant has always been willing to do whatever it takes with respect to DOT to make this work. If you remember, we went back to a realignment of Lake Drive with a traffic light. And then based upon public input, with the off-site impacts past our site with the, with the turn going into Lake City, it was clear that that was not a viable option. So we went to the traffic light. DOT said no. So we've been working, we've been listening to the public, and I think this layout reflects balance, let's say, before the board.
So you're mitigating the traffic on Lake Drive, and you've reduced two of the eight fueling positions, reduced fueling positions from eight to six?
Eight to six, and, and trying to get-
The convenience-
Trying to get traffic from our site off of Lake, force it onto 52.
Okay. And the convenience store remains the same size, the drive-through remains the same?
Correct.
Okay.
And all the, the original conditions that went along with that original site plan, delivery times, noise, lighting, that all remains. The biggest thing here is, is the reduction of pumps, traffic off of Lake, and the improvements to 52.
Okay. Brendan, with the reduction in the pumps, what does that do to the, to the traffic flow within the site that would be using these entrances and exits?
Well-
Can you just give us kind of an overview of that, and then maybe what each option does?
Sure. It does, I mean, for the, the most obvious thing, it does provide a little bit more room within the site and a little better circulation internally. Secondly, it does reduce the, the projected traffic. If you, there was a handout that you guys did get. If you look at it, there's, you can look at the numbers across, I can read them off, but basically-
Do we have that as something we can put up, Brian?
Yeah, which, yeah.
Just so that the audience-
Well, that's just one of the sheets, we have that.
Bear with us for a minute, we just, there's some traffic information, traffic counts and things like that that we want to talk about.
Go down two more, right there. That says, yeah, trip generation.
I can clearly see there's a table.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's any better. Maybe go to 100% Brian.
Go to 100 or 150?
Okay, we can, yeah. Maybe we can just look at it in two different, actually, the, what the bottom table is really just the, the level of service, and we have a graphic that'll show that laid out a little bit better than the table anyway, so you can see where the individual movements and the level of service associated with those movements. But if you look at the traffic generation, the third line down or the third row down where it says projected, generated trips and site access driveways, the, the bold numbers are the numbers that the site generates. In the first two are for the AM, and the second two are for the PM, the entering and the exiting. So what they're proposing with the three pumps, 91 entering, 88 exiting in the AM hour, peak hour, and then the PM peak hour, 74 entering and 74 exiting. The numbers underneath that were, those numbers reflect what it would be if there was eight fueling positions as opposed to the six. So it's a reduction-
You mean six as opposed to the eight?
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, from 108 down to 91, 105 down to 88, and 94 down to 74. So a modest decrease in the, in the generated traffic.
Brendan, there's, I realize, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The, I think we've been through this before, but how many of those people, you know, it says generated trips, but those really aren't people who would not be in that corridor anyways.
Right.
Those are just people pull in. Is there any feel for how much, how many people wouldn't be in that corridor but get pulled in?
So, there's two things to understand. They're still entering the site, but it's not, in terms of generated traffic, it's not new trips. It's called, they're called pass-by trips. If you look at the next row down where it says pass-by trips, and if you look in the first, in the first column, of those 91, those 91 projected vehicles that are going to enter the site in the peak hour and the AM, 63 of them are from pass-by traffic.
Okay.
So does that make sense to you? And you can read that right across the line. That's, and, you know, it's, it's a pretty significant percentage for a gas station and/or, you know, a drive-through, a coffee place, you know, a significant amount of traffic is just pass-by traffic.
I mean, given the fact that there isn't, I mean, the other parallel routes would be 82 and 84, you're saying that really that will bring an extra 30 cars into that section an hour that would not be, that would be either on 50 or 82 or 84?
Yeah, I mean, these are based on other studies. Every site's going to have its own variation of that, but, you know, the, the, when you look at a percentage of pass-by, pass-by trips, I mean, it's, it's based on, you know, the IT manual and other, other studies that were done at similar type of sites, and that's the experience that, you know, these studies have shown, that this is about the percentage of traffic that is there. So some people are going to, some people are going to come here because they want to get something from the store, or someone might come here just to get a cup of coffee. So that's a generated trip. It doesn't mean it's, you know, because they're coming there for that specific purpose. You know, the rest of them are, they're driving down the road, and then they just divert their trip to go in, get something, continue on their way. That's the difference.
So that's a generic thing. It doesn't factor in, like, how far away the alternative route is. Because you have to admit, when your choices are 82, 52, or 84, those are significant changes in your route.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be, wouldn't that, wouldn't they be maybe people that would go directly into the research site, and then they decide to-
Come here.
-go to there, and those are not, those are not drive-by, those are people that-
That are diverting, yeah, that are coming-
It's a short trip. So you've got a lot of people going into the research site-
Right.
-and some small percentage of them are going to stop and say, you know, I'm going to make a turn and go to the, to the convenience store and then go back to, to the research site. So it's not like they're, they're diverting from the other major roads. They're, they're going someplace near the area, and they would have normally not gone there, but now they are.
Or it could be someone from right in the vicinity that decides, hey, I want to go get a soda or a cup of coffee, so I'm going to leave my house and live in close proximity and come here. So, I mean, that's a generated trip. This, you know, this didn't exist when you're driving.
I appreciate that, and again, I'm not trying to nitpick it, I'm trying to figure out how much more traffic will really be there-
Right.
-because of this.
Well, isn't it, don't we, isn't that said a different way? This is going from eight fueling positions down to six, so isn't it how much less traffic will be there from the original approved plan where there was required to be a light?
There's that, too. There's that, too.
Because that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, how much less-
Yeah, so it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's in the magnitude of about, about 20 cars in that peak hour.
Okay.
You know, less.
Okay.
But, you know, 20 cars entering and exiting, so I guess a total of 40 cars in that peak So nine, you know, 108 down to 91. Or if you look even up on the first, on the first row, where that's just the, the traffic that's generated from the convenience store with the gas pumps. So it's from 67 with eight fueling positions down to 50 with six fueling positions. So 17 less cars would be entering.
Okay.
So I tried to put that, you know, so you can, you can understand that.
So this gives us a feel comparatively speaking to what the volumes are expected to be generated through the drive-through versus what would come through the pump or other convenience store traffic?
Right. And then, you know, the second, the, the second row relates to the, the coffee and donut shop or the drive-through, and that's, you know, that's unchanged.
So is that strictly the drive-through? Where, where is the traffic that is just coming in to park and go into the convenience store, but they're not getting fuel and they're not going through the drive-through?
That's, that's included in the, in the top number, that-
In the top number, okay.
It's a convenience store or convenience market with gas pumps.
Gotcha. Okay.
Brendan, I have two questions.
Sure.
The first one is, I wonder why enter doesn't equal exit or assess statistically just the way the data is collected and handled?
Again, it's just, it's just based-
If it's on an hour.
It's just based on previous studies, and how long they stay. They're, I mean, in this case, they're really close. I mean, they're off, it's just pretty much a 50/50 break, but-
Okay.
But believe it, I mean, they really do it, you know, in an empirical study, so, I mean, it's, you know, and it's, it's the, whatever, whatever those studies showed how the distribution was, and, you know-
It's the way the statistics are handled.
Yeah. But it really is a 50/50 break in this case.
Yeah.
In other developments, you know, you'll, like, you know, an office building, for instance-
Right.
-it'd be a lot different, a lot more people would be coming in, less people coming out.
Yes, there, I can understand it, you're right.
Right.
The second one is, when you have four pumps rather than three, I mean, I think everybody in the world's pumped gas. Some people's fillers are on the left, some are on the right, and when you pull into a place with multiple pumps, they aren't always full. It's to get a convenient pump, and it just makes the trend, the, the queue go faster through the pumps. I don't, I don't understand how it generates more cars.
Unless it, yeah.
Because there's no room for them to back up, so they wouldn't be backing up to three pumps.
There's just, there's just less, less positions for people to fuel at. I mean, there's, you know, there's only, there's only enough for six cars to position themselves to fuel. If there was another pump, there'd be, there'd have the ability to be, to be eight. But it's, 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 there's actually multiple ways to look at site generation or traffic generation for a site like this. You could look at the square footage of the convenience store, but the, the actual trip generation is less for that than it is for a pump.
So I don't, I go into stewards, and it depends on whether I've got my car more as, one fills on one side, one runs, fills on the other side. That depends which entrance I go into, and depends which pump I go for on which side of it. Sometimes all the pumps on the left are fine, but all the ones on the right are full, and then I just got to park and go in the store and buy something, come back and gas up later. So I don't understand that.
Yeah, again, it's, it's just based on, you know, of studies of similar gas stations, you know, where they, where they look at gas stations that have four fueling positions, six, eight, 10, 12, and, you know, they gauge the traffic based on the number of pumps. I mean, some of it is an indication of, of the, you know, the traffic that's in the-
So somebody did actual count on many gas stations, you lumped the data together and looked at their distribution, depending on how many pumps there are, how many cars. Got it?
Yeah. Bob, I think one of the big differences, too, if you look at the difference between the two plans, with the, with option two, you have the pumps vertical to the road-
Correct.
-and you have two-way circulation all the way around the pumps, whether you want to circle clockwise or counterclockwise-
Right.
-you're able to do that. In the, in the first option, the pumps remain kind of where they're positioned today, and they're, they're parallel to the road, so I think it's going to be a little bit more difficult if cars need to try to circle.
Manipulating their circling would be a little different.
Well, and it's no different than probably what it is today, right? Because that's where they are today.
I'm just curious how the numbers come back.
Brendan, do you expect more queuing to occur at the pumping stations with option one versus option two?
In terms of, and, I mean, for, for people to getting gas?
Right.
Certainly, but it's, it's a distribution of traffic. I mean, some people are going to come there to get gas, and some people are going to come to go to the convenience store, and some people are going to come to go through the drive-through, or, so, you know, that distribution. Could you get a little queuing because of less pumps? Sure.
I mean, you know, just from a, from a traffic flow and pedestrian safety standpoint, the first option has an awful lot of people. Nobody parks near the convenience store. You have to park and walk unless you park at a fueling pump. So you're going to have a lot more pedestrian traffic going in front of the car wash bays and going around some of these entrances. I think the second option, which is more similar to the original plan we approved, keeps most of that convenience store parking up against the store, so people aren't crossing lanes of traffic.
Brian, might be, you want to switch to this diagram? If you get up there, I'll-
Brendan, as far as the traffic counts between option one and option two, do we have a sense of what the traffic counts are for the car wash and convenience store?
The site-generated traffic?
Yeah.
Sure.
Brendan, as far as the traffic counts between option one and option two, do we have a sense of what the traffic counts are for the car wash and convenience store?
The site-generated traffic?
Yeah.
Sure. Brian, maybe before you go to that, why don't you just, I think it's in the same document. You just got to scroll down to the next sheet. So, this is the as-of-right configuration. And you can look at the, the third row has the project-generated trips. 44 and 43 entering and exiting, and 50 and 48 in the PM. So, you can see that's, you know, significantly less than the other, you know, the proposal with, with convenience store and drive-through.
So, I have to ask the dumb question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. There's six fueling pumps in option one, and there, or, I'm sorry, six fueling positions in option one, and six fueling positions in option two. How come the num, the top-line numbers aren't the same?
Okay. The, a legitimate question. There is a different designation, the way that the as-of-right one is, is actually a gas station with a convenience store as opposed to a convenience store with gas pumps.
Oh, okay. So, it's allocated by footage or usage?
Yeah. So, there's a different designation between the two. And a convenience store with gas pumps generates more traffic than a gas station with a smaller convenience store.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Brian, you want to switch to the diagram? Uh, one right below that. There you go. You might have to go to 50 on that one, Brian. Yeah, maybe 75?
No, that's, that's fine. That's good. Use that, because now we can see all of the yellow.
All right.
Egress and egress. I know we can't read the numbers, but-
All right, yeah. So, we try, just trying to highlight, you know, the movements-
Where traffic is going.
And, and where the traffic is actually going. You know, we have, there were some assumptions that had to be made, you know, based on the rear egress. You know, we estimated that probably only 10% of the traffic would actually go out that rear exit. So, that's, if you can read the numbers, I think it's nine and one. So, 10 cars going out that rear exit.
Peak hour, AM traffic?
AM traffic. And AM is, AM is kind of, is the controlling peak, you know, especially with the high school there.
So, basically, one car every six minutes or so?
Yeah. But it's, it's, you know, the most amount of traffic on, on 52 is in the AM peak hour. And this is what, when we looked at level of service, we looked at it in that critical. We did look at the PM also, obviously, but this is, this turns out to be the controlling peak hour during the day.
Okay.
Most of the traffic is going to use the full access driveway to the east. Forty, 45 cars taking a left out of there, and 11 taking a right. And then, at the right ins and right outs, another 22 looking to take a right turn out of there. So, 45 lefts, 11. Up above it is the actual level, calculated level of service. So, it's a level of service E with a delay of, an average delay of a little less than 44 seconds. No, no existing scenario to compare with you there. A few cars coming in, rights in, rights out. Looking at, looking at Lake Drive, comparing the existing to the proposed level of service. If you just look at Lake Drive right now with the existing traffic out there, in this AM peak, the existing level of service is a D with an average delay of a little over 30 seconds. Adding just those few cars in worsens the level of service to an E at an average delay of about 35 seconds. So, it's adding about five seconds of delay on Lake Drive with that little bit of added traffic. And you can see how sensitive it is. And you can see that in those scenarios when we looked at it before with a lot more traffic dumping out onto Lake Drive. It doesn't take a lot of cars to then create a lot more delay quickly. You know, it's sort of an exponential thing. It's not, a few more cars here. If you, so if you, in the other scenario, most of these cars were here. So, if you put that other 44 or 45 cars having to take a left out of Lake, that's when we were looking at very long Fs and, and long delay Fs.
So, Brendan, just bear with me for a second. So, up at the top, you had, I think, was it 10, 10 cars total?
Yeah.
So, is that based on a, on a calculation because it's an exit only? Or is that because it's an exit lane of a drive-through that they expect X percent of that drive-through to decide not to purchase?
It was really, really just an estimation of, of what we thought. You know, we thought a couple of cars might escape through there, the employees, or, or someone that lives in the neighborhood. So, I mean, it was, it was really just an approximation.
That seemed like a high-side estimate. I mean, most people, if they're in a drive-through lane, they're going to stay in a drive-through lane unless there's something unusual happening.
You know, it is, you know, it's not, it's not signed, it's not obvious for people that would use the area. Most of the people that came through the drive-through are going to circle to get out, you know, not circle back around and take a left-hand turn again. So, we wouldn't look at anyone that went through the driveway, through the drive-through to go to the back and get out.
So, it's strictly just people escaping?
People escaping, or, or an employee, or an occasional person, or someone from the neighborhood, or, you know, or, or someone that, you know, might, might exit that way. So, that's really an approximation. But-
Okay.
And we, and we tried to make it reasonable and realistic, so. Kind of lost my train of thought a little bit.
I'm sorry, yeah.
The other, you know, usually the other critical movements are the left turns into the site. These, there's, you know, I'm trying to look at the, 55 cars that are projected to take a left-hand turn into the site. But it operates at a good level of service. It's a, you know, a level of service of A. So, less, less than 10 seconds of delay for, for that movement to get into the site based on the conflicting traffic headed to the west. One thing, you know, Brian did mention, this is, this is a proposed left-turn lane into the site, which will help the traffic flow and not, not clog up traffic on 52. One thing to note, especially in the AM peak hour, is this, this is the right-turn entrance into the John Jay High School. It's used by students and faculty. Only in the AM, it's a gated entrance. The, you know, this main full-access driveway that's proposed is slightly beyond that. So, this traffic that comes out doesn't have the conflict with those. And it's, when we counted the traffic, we counted in this peak hour that we studied, about 120, 20-plus cars take this right turn into the parking lot at John Jay High School in this peak hour.
And with the right in and right out at the entrance that's across from that road, we shouldn't have anybody shooting straight across the highway?
Yeah, no. I mean, it's still going to be, it's going to be a double-yellow and hatched. As Brian indicated too, I mean, the plan is to install a splitter island, a raised island, to, you know, sort of force traffic to go in that, in that direction.
Okay. Okay.
We can look at, you want to look at the scenario for the as-of-right one? Same sort of-
I'd at least, I'd at least like to see what it does to the traffic on Lake. Because I know even though it's significantly less traffic, because it's full access in both locations on Lake, I'm curious to see what it does.
So, right there. Yep, Brian? So, when we looked at this scenario, we, we still looked at the majority of the traffic actually using the two primary entrances onto 52. Mainly because this, this access point is so close to the intersection that as traffic queues up here, it's just not easy to get out there.
You don't think the car sitting in the fueling position right there, though, isn't just going to try to go straight?
Yeah. Well, we, I mean, there, we did put a couple of cars to come out, but, you know, not a significant number. It, it, you know, but really for that reason, because there, even with the traffic that's there, you know, you, you would see a few cars queue up, and it's just so close that, you know, they're going to look to swing back around to another exit. I mean, that, that, that was the thought process. So, really, there's not, you know, there's, in this scenario, but still adding those few cars, it's about, it's about the same difference. A little 30, you know, 30 seconds of delay on Lake Drive for the existing traffic that's out there, and read that number, 30, a little less than 35. Still a level of service D. Actually, 30, 35 seconds is the cutoff. So, if it's 35 and over, it would be a level of service E, but it's 34.3. So, it's still a level of service D.
One more car use that? Does it go to an E? Or is it a couple more cars that would put it over?
A couple, a couple, what's that?
Would one more car put it over the 35?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Because I don't, I, I think it's, I can't imagine somebody sitting at that one fueling position and not-
Not, not coming out.
Yeah. I mean, two cars an hour seems very small.
You could make the argument this is slightly underestimated. You know, in the, in the morning hour, I mean, it shows, you know, cars coming in, some of them are going to come in just to park to go to the convenience store, or employees, you know, maybe a couple would use the, the car wash. The, the car wash is much more of a PM generator than it is an AM generator. And then, you know, these, these splitting traffic up, you know, again, remember, this is a lot less traffic than, you know, significantly less than the proposed scenario. So, you split it up between a couple of driveways, you know, the level services are pretty good. It's level service C, even for the left turners coming out.
What's the, what's the estimate on cars trying to come out that, that western Route 52 entrance and trying to shoot across into the-
Coming across here?
Into the high school entrance, yeah.
Yeah. We sort of equally distributed that traffic, so about 20 cars in each driveway. You know, 10 lefts, 10, 10 rights.
Do you think it's more likely that they would use that entrance and try to go straight across, or that they would go out onto Lake and make a left, and then make the right into the high school?
Yeah. I mean, this is pretty jammed up in the morning, so. I mean, there's, you know, a fairly decent stream of cars that are making that right turn. If someone wanted to come across the road and, and still make that right turn, really, this is their better bet, if, if they were looking to do that.
Which is their better bet? Lake or?
Lake, Lake Drive, yeah.
Okay. I just have a concern. We may be underestimating that traffic volume there. Okay. All right. Brian, you said they're all hand-car washed, that none of the bays were mechanical? Because I thought when you came in for discussion, one of them was mechanical.
I think on the original site plan, they're all hand-washed.
Okay.
I'm going to put it back on the other diagram since that might generate more questions.
Thank you for breaking out all of those numbers. It's, it's helpful to understand each scenario. Shell or Joe, anything else we should go over with regard to the, the traffic and the light?
I just had a minor question or comment about, about the access when it comes to the fuel truck, maybe the delivery, where it's shown off on the right-hand side, and then tanks to the left. It's my understanding that most fuel tanker trucks have the ability to only offload on the right, your passenger side of the truck. I don't know if Brian can comment on that?
We can flip the tanks, I think, to fill. We can swap the tanks left to right. So, we can reposition the vents so that the trucks do pull in, they can have the fill caps on the right.
Okay.
I think, I think right now, the way we have, I think that the tanks were just generically shown, but the fill caps are right here. We can just flip the tanks 180 degrees, put the fill caps here along the curb line. Just reposition the vents.
Okay.
The rest of our comments are more on the original plan.
Okay.
So, depending on which way they go. We'll get back into those at a later time.
Scott or Tom, any, okay. Any other questions or comments from board members before we open for public comment? Okay. Then, for those of you who would like to speak for or against the John Jay gas station amended site plan, keep in mind, we're, we're trying to gain an understanding of the, the different traffic options, options here, knowing that there cannot be a traffic light here in the foreseeable future, because the DOT has said no. If you can, want to speak, come on up and sign in, and we'll call you up in the order that you sign in. And you can come on up to the podium, sir.
You were the first one.
You were the first one. We can-
I'm Alan Kalodner. I live at 11 Circle Drive. First, let me thank the board and the applicant. This design is pretty close to what we've been asking for. Couple of questions.
Sure.
Will the restrictions that were placed on the drive-through pertain to this new proposal, 11 PM?
Restrictions with regard to-
That the drive-through would be closed?
Hours of operation and things like that. Brian, are you recommending any changes to that?
All conditions that we agreed to of original site plan remain. The only thing we're changing is access along 52, three pumps.
Instead of four?
The accesses along Lake. Everything else we explained, they provide in the schedule.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Will this restriction on the drive-through be irrevocable five years down the road?
Tom, I'm going to ask you what the purview of the planning board is with regard to something like that, if-
Well, if it's a condition of disapproval, in order for any modification to be made, they would have to file, have a public hearing, and go through a similar such analysis.
So, it's not just they can then-
No, no.
Thank you.
This maintains the water line to the back of the property?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll ask the board. Can you just explain the curbing along 50, excuse me, along Lake? There'll be complete curbing from the back entrance exit all the way up to the, to that point, and then from that point up to the roadway. There was originally talk of there being sidewalks for the-
Show sidewalks? Will you do anything that sidewalk property? Will we strip any of these areas here, or whatever DOT requires for pedestrians coming across? I show the curb coming up into here. We did provide a landscaping buffer in here, just to provide some kind of green between Lake and building. This is a pretty wide shoulder in here. So, I did, I tried to bring the curb up as much as possible, but then also, here, we just have the landscape of buffering here.
But it'll be a raised, cars won't be able to just drive?
Brian, I'm, I, I'm not sure we're picking up your voice so that everybody can hear you. So, I, I know there's a mic there, if, if we can just have you-
The intention is to raise curbing, all of 52, raise curbing here, so that people can knock across. Raise curbing here, all the, through the, the concrete sidewalk transitions into the site here, and also, also side over into this egress.
Great.
Thank you.
Hours of operation for the convenience store, is it 24?
Yes.
Yes.
What happens if one, two, three years down the road, the traffic is not as, has been explained tonight? That the rear entrance, we're pushing 20 cars out the back, we're queuing up onto Lake. What happens then?
I, I think based on what we, what we hear tonight, if it seems like option, I'm going to call this one option two, the drive-through option, option two, seems like the option that we're comfortable with. I think the board needs to have a conversation to say whether or not we need to bond for a future traffic study, or bond for the light to potentially go in at some point in the future, and we have to determine how long that bond needs to be. We're also very aware that there's quite a few other development and projects going on in the same corridor. So, it's hard to predict. I mean, we're trying, but it's hard to predict what the traffic's going to look like.
I think the last time Brendan had made the comment that it was a huge increase in traffic to justify a light. I don't know if that was the wording he used.
It was the, what it amounts to is to actually justify the light here. It, it has to generate more traffic on Lake Drive for more hours of the day.
Right.
So, because 50, 52 is already sort of at that threshold where if, if it increased from 600 to 900 cars in, in a peak hour, you know, in both directions on, on 52, it's not going to have much impact on a warrant analysis. It needs to be more traffic on, on Lake Drive, or some configuration of Lake Drive, if there's potential for realignment to Auditorium Drive, or you can see how the rest of the corridor develops.
So, unless things really get out of hand, there would be no light?
There could be no light. It doesn't mean there won't be a corridor improvement, though. That could, that could help the corridor, you know, in, in totality, so.
You know, our, our challenge right- You know, our, our challenge right now is that we just, we don't know. We know what, what is coming, what's proposed right now, but we don't know what it's going to do.
I just want to be clear, I'm not in favor of a light there, so.
Okay.
The current refresh with this current site, I don't think that's, from my perspective, a realistic op, option. I don't think...
Option one, you mean?
Yeah, option one. Today, just by chance, there was a traffic study being performed on the corner of Lake and fifty-two, and when I stopped and asked the gentleman who was there, who was there all day, he said he was there for the dome. Why would he be studying traffic at that location for the dome property?
We study all area intersections, nearby intersection.
Okay, so he's moving around?
Absolutely.
Actually, just to clarify that, I mean, it was, it was, there was two gentlemen there, both from my office, we're counting traffic for two different developments within the corridor. So we're going to recount again, we're trying to keep our, our, you know, our data current...
They were very parched, we offered them water. And just, if you go to the option one plan where, Ms. Key, you, you had showed, talked about the traffic exiting from the pumps out onto Lake?
Right.
That number of one is make believe. Every car that lines up at those pumps...
I would agree with you.
Comes out on the lake.
I would absolutely agree with you.
So if you're going to make the right onto Lake, you, you T-bone somebody, and that's been a thirty-five year...
Absolutely.
Are you going to stop for a light?
Right.
Are you going to stop for a...
So I'm in, you know, of the two, this is, this is fantastic.
Okay.
One other question, so the car, drive-through will have to come out onto fifty-two unless they decide to go all the way back around the entire property and exit out of the back, is that correct?
Right.
Which won't happen.
Plus they'd be taking the same left-hand turn.
Correct.
And potentially against more traffic because of the...
And just doubling the trip.
Right.
And just closing, today at seven, ten AM, I, I tried to make a left-hand turn out of Lake, took me three minutes and forty seconds. Today at five oh five, I tried to exit, took me two minutes and fifty seconds. So I, I think the, the, the level of service, as you call it, is far worse than a D.
You, I mean, one thing you have to recognize, it is an average, so, you know, one person gets out in two seconds.
And then I...
Yeah, right. And, and in any particular situation, it can happen, so if you got a plume of traffic...
But thank you for the board, and thank you for the applicant, I think this is a great improvement.
Thank you very much. The next item on our list, uh...
I'm Don Smith, I live on thirty-six Circle Drive. I want to thank the board especially for this plan here, it's exactly what we wanted, what Alan was saying, with the traffic all flowing out onto fifty-two, it makes it much better for us. The way that you were talking about that car coming out, I've almost hit cars that are parked across the road on Lake, it, it, they come straight across, they park and they wait for the left-hand turn, nobody goes, and the traffic just stops there. So as far as this goes, it's a, it's a big improvement, and I supported a lot of the, really, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Margaret?
I'm very happy with, with this proposal also. I do hope that this does get approved, but I do want the town to keep, the board keep in mind that I would hate to have the water used as a carrot in front of you, opposing bridge, the first one, because, because of the Navigation Act, prior owners, future owners, and present owners are responsible to giving us water for the contaminated wells in the area. I have consulted my attorney, and that is what's going to be said in federal court probably very soon, when I can get my calendar date, and I do want to make that aware to the board, that it's an obligation of prior, present, and future owners. There's a stigmatism to that gas station because of the contamination that has been done to the property owners. So it's certainly not a carrot to be put in front of you, and a good gesture by anyone at this point.
Okay.
And also, I want to mention too, with the water lines going across, nothing's been taken into consideration to a pump station. Where is that going to be? The water can go across the street...
I'm not sure, isn't this a pressurized main?
No, it has, I've, I've spoken to people in the town, and it does have to be a pump station put onto this line.
Okay.
Are you talking about water?
I'm talking about water, yes.
No, there's, who did you discuss that with at the town, a pump station?
Mr. Hickman, and also numbers of people when I sued the...
There's, there's discussion of a pump station for sewer.
Not for, no, for the water.
No.
Coming out of Fishkill. Yes, because I went to court, it's on documentation of my court records.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
What's the purpose of the water pump station?
The pump station was to get the flow of the water to be able to go to Lake City, because a water district has to be set up.
I, I want to, I want to keep us focused on what, what this applicant is doing right now, and we're specifically...
The water plans are on there, and also, they're the ones who brought the water issue up, saying that if you went with their first proposal, that they were not going to put the water in. They do not have a choice about this water.
This applicant is not obligated to put in the water line.
Oh, yes, he is. Future owner, prior owner, and present owner.
The D C has given him a release of liability for any issue off the site.
The federal courts have not, Mr. Wood.
There is no federal court action pending at this time.
There is.
Well, the town is not aware of it, so.
Well, they will be very soon.
Okay, very soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I, I'm sorry, before you, before, so are you voicing a preference for the first option, which is the car wash, or the second option, set the water aside?
No, I don't want to know the car wash, because then, then that runoff is just going to go into the sewer, the manholes are there, I'm going to end up in my brook, so I really don't want that.
Okay.
I mean, I am happy that they, the, the applicant has done a great job for Lake City, and I am really appreciative of all the work that they have put into this, but I don't want the water to be the carrot in front of the horse, because it's, it's not existing.
But taking out, setting the water aside, you're still looking at option two, it's probably okay.
I think this is fine, because I think also the traffic study should have taken consideration of the number of people that used to be on Route fifty-two when the IVM plant was going full, full force, with an additional eight to nine thousand people, that that gas station worked perfectly fine, and Archway worked perfectly fine. So, I mean, the traffic studies are wonderful, but we handled a heck of a lot more traffic on fifty-two successfully.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the John Jay Gas Station amended site plan? Okay, Brian, come on back up. Look, I'm, I'm comfortable that option two, in my opinion, is the better option as far as site circulation, traffic, et cetera. Is there anybody who has questions for Brian, or any questions before we talk about if we narrowing down to an option here and then what our next steps are?
No, I just want to make one more point, though, that, and that is aesthetically, with all the, the growth plan, this is also a much better option, rather than, I mean, I, barring a miracle, that existing building is never going to be anything that's going to be called attractive, let's put it that way.
Correct.
Okay. John, Russ, any, anything else that...
No, I think this is the best option.
Gentleman to my left?
No.
Okay. So let's, um, let's talk about potentially bonding for either a future traffic study or some type of additional improvement here based on what happens. And Brendan, I guess I'm, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'd like to hear your thoughts, because we know that there's a lot of other development going on here. We know that we're doing our best to identify this, but we don't know exactly what it's going to be. Do you have a recommendation?
In terms of, I mean, I mean, I do think that, you know, some type of bond is definitely warranted. I, I wouldn't say it should be specifically for a traffic signal dislocation, I think it should be, you know, to, to look at the traffic, make sure things are operating correctly, and then potentially contribute to what the corridor improvement could be, because there are many options.
Yeah, I mean, the likelihood is more of a fair share type contribution in the future versus a, a full light by this applicant.
Right.
Let me, let me just challenge that logic.
Sure.
I mean, given, given the fact that DOT is saying it's not warranted now, wouldn't any future really be beholden on them to do the research and...
The DOT?
Yeah.
You might want to think that, but that's not, that's not the reality.
It's not unusual in circumstances like this to have a bond posted for a period of time so that you can go back and do another analysis, say in two years when they're operational, et cetera, and to see how correct the traffic engineers were in their assumptions. If it all pans out that it's operating as designed, that would be the end of it. If not, as Brendan indicates, then the bond would be for possible other, maybe a longer churning lane, or, you know, some tweak that would show, but it's usually what's done customarily when the traffic situation is, you know, you have a good handle on it, but it still may need a little fine tuning.
Okay, so the, miss the boat option is not, not really applicable, okay?
And the applicant is agreeable to that, I think it's the timeframe, they just maybe want to get specific on, I mean, ten years down the line is...
Well, because at some point here, you're looking at if, if we move forward with option two, we still need to revise the resolution, we need to be very specific.
Right.
What's going to be required there.
Okay.
Two years, three years?
What's that?
Two years, three years?
That would lend to it more towards, more than three years, I would say, just because of, you know, the level of development that's might, may occur in that area.
Because don't forget, that's three years from the signing of the map, so the map, the site plan, which may not be done, you know...
Could be a year after.
Could be until you get a, whatever other approvals have.
Oh, I'd rather have it be at least...
Three from CO?
Well, if not three from CO, at least two or one, I mean, we need to see what it's going to be like once it's fully operational, I don't want to have...
I think within two years of a CO, you're going to, you're going to know right off the bat, especially with the new gas station, new facade.
Two from the CO would work for me, if that's...
I would agree, particularly given the fact that really with the down, the other potential corridor changes, there's a lot better chance to reactivate the light, I forgot.
Raffle.
Thank you. That light versus, you know, versus Lake, given with the, you know, where the other, where the other proposals are.
Or if some of these other roads are rerouted in the meantime, I mean, with all this development happening, we just can't, it's hard to predict the future right now.
I understand, I understand.
Okay. So I think two years from the CO, now let's talk about exactly what we would be bonding for. Is it a contribution to a traffic study? Is it a contribution to improvements? Do we want to talk about that offline and come back with a recommendation? I want to make sure.
I think maybe what we'll do is come back to what a proposed resolution, with a recommendation at that time, rather than...
And you can work with our professionals in the meantime, Brian, to figure that out. But I think two years from CO makes sense, that way everything's up and running, we can kind of see how the site is, is moving.
Correct, we've, we've talked about that offline, the applicant is agreeable to that.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for John Jay Gas Station?
So moved.
Did I say one thing first?
Sure, Bob, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. One of the things I detest about politics and big business in general is this carrot sticks though. I think option two's the better option personally, I think it's better for the people in Lake City, but I, I don't know what's the right way to say it, I, I really kind of disrespect the applicant to some extent when they come in and offer a carrot, if you'd go with this option, you get order, if you go with this option, you don't, I just think that's wrong. Thank you.
I, I think there's a very different, and, and we saw it in the, I, I hear what you're saying, Bob, but we saw it in the traffic counts, you have less than half the cars that would travel to a site with the first use versus the second use. So there's an economic impact to the applicant if they have to, if they go back to an as-of-right design, there's clearly an economic benefit with this plan, so I think, I don't view this as a carrot and a stick, I view this as, you know, we're allowing something here, we're looking at it as a planning board, and there are things that we can require when it's a change like this, when it's a minor site plan change, there's less that you can require. If they're not tearing up the road anyway to do some of these improvements, the ability to install those things, to me, is a little bit more limited. I, I understand that there's, I understand that this was characterized as carrot and stick a couple times in the conversation tonight, I didn't look at it that way.
I do.
Okay.
I, I think the D C was clear, I mean...
Well, you had a motion, second.
Yes, please, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
By a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we would put you on for June third for an amended decision. Tom, is that enough time? I know we've got holidays coming up and things like that.
It's only the one condition that changes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you again for presenting the options to us, and Brendan for the work on the traffic, we made it very easy to understand.
This is Brian.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for the Hopewell Square proposed daycare on Route three seventy-six.
As of last month's discussion, we reviewed some of the recommendations by the board and changed the plan accordingly. We did add some one-way and do-not-enter signage for around, around the access around the site. We were able also that middle row in the rear parking area, flip the parking spots to the access into the parking spot was a little more easier instead of maneuvering around the back. We, we reviewed the bus drop-off, actually, we reviewed it and also the transport, Wapger's Transportation came out, the woman's in charge of the big buses, and she preferred dropping off in front of the door, too, where we proposed by the handicap spot there, that was the safest spot, she, she would like, you know, for the kids to be dropped off.
Okay.
The parking, I know, was a, a question, and we have a, a maximum of fifty-five students that could fit into that daycare, which requires eleven employees. We use those numbers with the five parking spots per students, the one parking spot for five students with the eleven employees, the three hundred square feet for the professional office upstairs, which gave us a total of about thirty-nine spots. We actually are showing forty-three, and that includes two handicaps. We also added some dimensioning to the roadways and the aisleways between the parking spots as X, and I believe that was pretty much all the main questions that had to change at the moment.
Okay. I think at the, the last meeting, we had some discussion about the churning radius for the various fire or bus apparatus, and especially, I think, on the, I'm going to say the bottom of the diagram, so the south side?
Yes, the south.
The south side. Was, seemed a little bit narrow, is that, Brendan, we, did we get the revised churning lane information?
We haven't yet, and I've been coordinating that with, with the applicant. It is that, you know, hundred-foot platform truck that we need to get through there, I think we did have a discussion about it being a little tight on that side, I think, I think there's a willingness to widen that a little bit.
Yeah, and that, that's what I think we were going to ask, because I know the property itself continues on for quite, quite a distance...
Correct.
To the south, so if we had the ability to widen that a little bit, I think one of the other things, especially with having potentially some of this parking in the back for people that are going into the first floor, the top floor, you're going to have pedestrians potentially walking up one side or the other, and it'd be nice to have a specified pedestrian walkway, so we don't have pedestrians walking up a narrow driveway with cars or buses trying to get through at the same time.
Yeah, I could always take that proposed pavement line, we can push it out a little bit more, or you see it tying into the existing, we could just bring it up a little farther up to tie it into the, you know, a little higher up.
Do you have enough parking at the, at the top here for the people that would occupy the top?
No, I think I'm, well, I mean, I have enough parking on the site itself for the usage of the building, but...
No, understood, but to avoid people having to walk up the hill.
No, I think I'm, I think I'm like a parking space are too short probably for the top that's in the back. I mean, I could also, I do have...
Same question again, is can we kick out the pavement just a little bit to get you enough parking?
Yeah, I mean, I could always add whatever it is, the one or the two parking spots up in this top corner here.
Right.
And that, take this proposed line, these two people line the grade up, so whatever parking spots are, so that you're going to widen out the driveway plus two more parking spots at the top.
Okay. That might also give you an ability to either stripe or create a pedestrian walkway That might also give you an ability to either stripe or create a pedestrian walkway that's separate from the vehicle travel way, especially if someone's coming up that hill.
Yeah, except for the problem, well, they can't edge a couple of parking spots.
Yeah, the two slots or spots I would see as problematic are the ones right at the top of the hill, just as you come in, trying to clear that last parking space just before you start down the hill, right there. Right.
So maybe move that one.
That's going to be the one that I...
It's 14 minutes, like, up through here, and we have this hatchet here. We have some construction, putting those cars parked there. They seem to be making okay, but we can look at it to see, make sure it's, you know, the radius is okay. If not, I could try to kick that over into the other upper corner.
Yeah, it might not be a bad idea if you maybe give yourself that spot and the triangle you have there now to help, help that churning radius from the top. I agree with you, Mike, it's a little tight. Okay. But you have the space to do it. I...
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that. Michelle, if that, if that was done with the reordering of the spots where there's a few more up on top, are there any specific ones, or Brendan, with regard to site circulation, but Michelle, I'm also thinking with regard to more the green spaces, are there any spots we would eliminate from, from the back? To improve the circulation or to just keep more green? Because I think you're paving more than what's paved right now, right? In the, in the back half of that parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, very, very little. It's that, that corner right there, you see it? Where the shaded, that's the only spot.
Okay. Okay. The sign that you're going to use, is there, is there a difference in the sign for the site?
The sign for the people who are there?
Yeah.
No, it's the, the existing signs there, they just redid it. They just changed the color.
Same size and everything, same location, no change?
Same exact, no change.
Okay.
Question, you used the word students. Is there going to be like any kind of formal instruction going on? Or is this just...
No, it's not student. Well, it's, I think they have like an infant room, a three-year-old and a four-year-old room, so it's up to, you know, it's just a regular daycare.
It is daycare.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, there's no way to access the upper and lower floor internally in the building.
Not even for fire? There's no stairway or anything that gets you from one to the other?
No, because the way that building is, it's an existing building's built, it's almost like, it's one level on top, and then the bottom is almost like a walkout. It's like a walkout, almost like a walkout basement on the house, but you know what I'm saying? But it's, it's a second floor.
I think we just thought there was a stairway in there at some point, so that's why...
No, they had like an old, like, in the back too, like a wooden fire hatch thing they came down, thing and stuff like that. You know, it was all kind of decrepit, but that's been all redone and changed out.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments for board members?
The signage, maybe I missed that in the last meeting. Is that, the sign is going to remain the same, or is there going to be a new sign for...
For the people that are in the building, or are you talking about like roadway signage?
Out on the road.
No, yeah, it's the same, it's same location, same sign. They just took it off, redid it, and put it back on.
Okay.
Do we have your hours of operation?
Just your normal, I have to ask, but I think it's normal business hours, you know, for the offices upstairs, they give an attorney upstairs, so, and the daycare probably runs, I think, somewhere around like seven to seven, I'm sure, you know, give or take in that area.
Okay. And then do we have a lighting plan for your parking lot?
It's all the existing lights we're using that are there.
Okay, so no new lights? No different lights on the building or anything like that?
No, no new lights, just, well, just your regular spot, you know, like sconce lights on next to your doors, and actually, you can see that on the plan right there.
Okay.
Sconces by the doors, just your regular spotlights up in the corners. But the, all the existing lights are already on the poles that are outside.
Okay. So, Michelle, have we looked at the lighting plan or do we...
Yes, I did look. Okay. Yeah, I think, I think I was, the only issue I had was that whether or not the far back parking row would have enough lighting for people to see. There's a light, I think, right here, right?
Yeah, that's, those are actual, like, your streetlights that are on the poles that are there, and I can see it right there now here, Route 376, the regular bar.
And you, do you have anything on the, on the building itself and wall packs?
Uh, yeah, we have spotlights on the corner. 234, we have the wall packs, we have wall packs with the more decorative sconces between every door.
Address your first, what are, we were just looking at the parking that you had asked, and I think there is a potential to get rid of a couple of spaces up in this corner. There is a potential to get rid of a couple of the spaces in the corner here, but, you know, it's, it's also possible, I don't, let me look and see if the footcandle reading on this particular light.
No, I don't think I have a footcandle on that one.
I'd, I'd like to see the footcandle reading for this light before I tell you whether or not we need additional lighting here, but it seems to me like we, it's, you could potentially need maybe another fixture up in this corner, depending on how strong this lighting is. Okay. Or maybe in the corner here to, over here, I don't know where you, you know, maybe you could direct light from here if you don't want to fall away out here. We don't have photometrics, but it's an existing condition.
Michelle, what's, what's the motivation for that? Is that just...
Just to make sure that people can see in the back parking lot in the evening so they pick up the kids.
Okay.
Because right now, there's one, or if you're working from the first floor, you're walking the light into the back. There's only one lamp post out there.
There's like an arm, a mast, you have one here, you have one here, you've got just three of them right here, one here down here, and then on the building, you have swap lights on the one.
Okay. 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 So potentially, again, if you were to add a couple of the spots up on top so that you, you're self-sufficient up on the top and you won't have as many potentially employees or customers walking from the back up, up the hill, you may be able to move some of those spots there furthest away from the light versus putting up a new light?
If I get the photometric, that would be helpful.
161?
Yeah.
Well, I think we're going to require, I mean, you've got to keep in mind, it may be existing, but this is a new use, completely different use, so we're going to require that. And you can get a lighting company, I don't know, there's a couple out there, they'll do it for you. Send them a CAD file.
Okay.
They'll tell you what you need.
I have a light, I actually have a light here. I could go out there with you and measure the existing levels.
I don't know what you have now. You got halide lights or what do you have?
What's that, the existing ones?
Yeah.
They're the, like, the photo sensor, like the actual streetlights with the arm and the mast out there, so I got to try and see exactly.
I mean, now everything, what LED?
They still look like halide lights.
But I mean, you may want to...
It doesn't look like LED.
Because you can probably use your service to that mount, which is maybe the head or things like that.
Or you could put another, another light on.
Michelle, was there anything else you wanted to go over?
I just think they've added the emergency meeting area. I think they addressed all of my other comments. Okay. Brendan, anything else with traffic?
Well, we do need to get a diagram showing that the 100-foot platform truck is going to get through.
Right, right.
Looking at the site, I do think it's going to get through, but we're going to, we need to get that on the plan, and I'll work with Paul and get that done. My comment that Paul was going to address is the center parking aisle in the rear is kind of offset to the north, which you're just going to, I told him, we have a big idea to center that, give a little bit more room to negotiate to the refuge area and even around that parking island. I think the bus we talked about...
You're com, I'm sorry, Brendan, the, the bus, you think is going to be comfortable? I mean, or do you think it's going to be tight?
Fitting the bus through? No, I think the bus will fit through. And I think it's going to be more of a challenge for the fire apparatus.
Okay.
Brendan, just enough fire apparatus. That one attachment you sent me, I was looking at the wheelbase, the SU-40 that I put on there, it looks like the actual wheelbase of that new fire truck seems like it might, the wheel, the truck overall is a little bit longer because you have the overhangs in the back and the front, but the, it seems like it's about two feet shorter than the one I have on there, the wheelbase itself, so that's what it might be.
I'm trying to track down the actual, from the manufacturer and the town assisting me, getting the actual turning diagrams for that truck. It's a new truck that the town has purchased. They're due to get it in the next couple of months, and my understanding from a conversation today, you know, on commercial sites, when calls come in, this is the truck that's going to be dispatched, so it needs to get through the site. But those overhangs make a big difference in terms of everything. So we'll, again, my preliminary look at it, I think it's going to get through, it's just a matter of getting it correct on the plan. Talk to Paul briefly about the signage, the one-way and do-not-enter, just getting them oriented on the plan, the way they're actually going to be installed. The circulation arrows, were they just for illustration?
Uh, no, we're thinking of maybe putting those arrows in there, just, you know, to help push the people around, showing them the arrow, you go this way, this way, and then bring them around.
Are they painted or are those signs?
No, no, the, on the...
On pavement?
Yeah, you can see right here, it is.
So you might, you might need a detail then, just a diagram, how big they're going to be. And then, and we talked about, you know, definitely increasing the width on the south side of the building. And if we can get that lined up, I think we can, you know, get 16, 18 feet in there.
Yeah.
Make it a lot better.
On the north side, is there any intention that that's going to be pedestrian traffic too? Like, for example, you said there isn't enough traffic in the, I mean, parking in the front for all the uses on the, on the top story. So theoretically, if some of those people with medical appointments are parking in the back, how do they get to the front? Because they, they can't go in the building in the back and go up, right? So they got to, they got to basically walk up that walkway, particularly on the north side. I mean, the south side, I think, is, is fine. They can get out of the way of a bus. But if they encounter a bus on that, when they're trying to walk up that, I mean, let's...
We'll try to review with type of, like you said, some type of like hatching or walkway that we can put, you know, going up that, that left side for like a, you know, striping for a walking area or something, once we widen it out.
Okay. Thank you.
But if I, if I add two spaces on top, I'll have enough for the top if I, if you want maybe more spaces?
Yeah.
Then I have enough for...
Would the, the top would need about 18 spaces, right? Now they're 16, so if they added the two spaces, technically, it would meet the zoning.
Okay.
Okay, we just need to capture your name for the minute.
Thank you.
Okay. However it works out, I just think if, if you're, if there's going to be any pedestrian traffic coming up that north side, it's tight.
But I think on the south side, you could have a walkway. You've got space for that. Again, though, if you're providing the traffic on the top, that's...
Yeah, I can provide all the spots up top, so...
Joe, anything else for engineering we need to review?
Yeah, Paul and I have been talking about the plan. He's made most of the changes from our last review. The only items are really that down to the, how he's showing the floodplain limit. There isn't really anything new being built in the floodplain other than the refuse enclosure. I think the way he's showing it is probably conservative, so we're just recommending that he goes through the process of a floodplain development permit with the town. And he did provide calculations or had someone, the manufacturer, provide some calculations for the retaining wall. We've looked at those and made some comments just to make it clear between his details on the plan and the calculations that they kind of correspond to each other. And the rest of it was mostly just minor details about fencing and signage and different things, so...
Any questions or comments from board members? It sounds like we're making a few changes to the plan, but they don't, they don't seem substantive. Do we want to see this one more time before we schedule a public hearing or just schedule the public hearing and with the understanding that you'll make those adjustments that we've talked about?
Do we have a recommended hour width on the south side, Brendan? Just so if they're going to make changes?
I think it's going to be based on...
Those parking spots.
If you put those parking spots, I think we're going to end up getting probably 20 feet of pavement along that side of the road, so I think it's going to be sufficient.
Do we need to circulate for lead agency? Did I skip over that? Did we need to circulate for lead? Okay. It's just a, it's an existing building, it's an agency that's...
Yeah, you're, you're on, it's existing, so, right.
I had my moment of doubt there for a second.
So with that, are we going to require fire striping closer to the building and whether the main, will the traffic get out? You want cars just passing each other up the hill then?
We can't hear Scott. I'm sorry.
Right, you want to...
So in terms of, you're saying, I'm coming up this outside, the additional width...
Either make it like unloading zone or fire zone so that you don't have cars passing each other, trying to pass each other coming up that hill.
Yeah, right. I think even what you mentioned...
And to show that striping of some sort.
Yeah, you're going to look to put some kind of strapping pedestrian...
Off the curb or something, so we can now be parked, so one way off the curb and then one way...
Right, so you don't have cars dragging up the hill, so to speak. But it's there for emergency or for whatever.
Yeah, we can hatch it off. And we'll, once we lay out the...
You just want to have that striping as well.
Okay.
So we would need revised plans into the office at least 15 days prior? Are we 25 days prior when it's public hearing?
For the listening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
15 days, okay. And you have to advertise at least 25 days ahead, so either June 17th or July 1st? July 1st.
I can make June 17th if you're trying, right? I have 25 days in. I'll get them out for the, the letters this week, right?
Yeah, they have, probably go by Friday.
Yeah, I can get them out.
And you have to have the plans in by June 2nd.
Okay. Do you have a motion to schedule this for a public hearing on June 17th?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I know you're working on a couple of things. If you need to reach out to the professionals, we need to, and Brendan, I, you know, if we don't get the churning radii in time, I think we can still address that while we're during public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Orthopedic Associates site plan on Route 52.
My name is Christopher Lupin with the Chays and Companies. I'm representing Orthopedic Associates this evening. I also have two representatives of orthopedics with me this evening, in the event that there's any questions of the operations that they can answer. We're before the planning board in April to have a kind of a sketch plan discussion of the property and as to what their intentions were for the redevelopment of the former Junction 52 restaurant. Just to kind of give a brief summary of it, the former restaurant occupied a footprint, including the patio area, approximately almost 6,000 square feet.
We're having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry. Can you just lean a little closer to the mic for us?
The former restaurant operated a footprint of approximately 6,000 square feet. There was 132 seats within the restaurant, there were 32 seats within the lounge area, eight schools at the bar. It was served by a private well and a private septic system in the rear, dual access off of Route 52. The intent of, of the applicant is to demolish the existing building, utilize the existing The intent of, of the applicant is to demolish the existing building, utilize the existing septic system, and construct a two-story, twelve-thousand-square-foot orthopedic building.
I just stopped you right there. Do you have the disc?
I do not have a disc. I wasn't advised.
We're in discussion, it's not public hearing, so it's, it's okay. Unless, was there something specific, Scott, we needed to look at?
No, we've been in the practice of having everything so everybody can see.
For public hearings, right? Okay.
No, for discussion as well. I think that's the only disc we don't have.
I can certainly provide the disc next time. The intent is to abandon the two existing entrances along Route Fifty-Two and move the entrance further to the east to utilize the existing left turn lane coming into the site. We've provided parking to accommodate eighty-three spaces, which is slightly in excess of the town requirement of eighty spaces for this site.
And that's the medical calculation?
That's the medical calculation.
Michelle, have we confirmed that that's ac, that's accurate?
Yeah, that's the parking calculation?
Yes, it is, yes. Okay. Thank you.
The, the site itself, in terms of the layout of the building and the parking, is not conforming in that the landscape buffer of fifty feet along a Route Fifty-Two, we do not meet that requirement. We've shown a plan for twenty-four feet. That is an improvement upon what was existing right now. The building itself, though, is set back fifty feet so that we have full landscaping in, in front of the building. We also discovered during the preparation of this application that buildings to the west of the Teconic require a one-hundred-foot setback from the property line, so that too is gonna require eight variances from the ZBA in terms of the front yard setback.
Okay.
We're here this evening to further the dialogue in this application. We submitted a full set of preliminary site plans, which included a grading plan, utility plan, site plan, landscaping plan, and lighting plan. The board has asked, I've heard previous applications this evening, the applicant is proposing all LED lighting on the site that's been provided for in our application along with the photometric plan.
Okay. You mentioned that you're, you're within the hundred-foot required front setback?
Correct.
Is the building in line with other buildings in that area, or is it actually gonna sit in front? Cause I know you're, I think you're next to the bank on one side and...
Yeah, the bank's a little further back from us. I have not looked at it with relation to the double contestant slash pizzeria adjoining the property.
Okay.
Two questions. One, we talked originally about the idea of connecting the parking lots so theoretically people could leave your parking lot, traverse the banks, and then come out at the light. Is that anywhere on the...
Yeah, I've spoken to the applicant, and that's a major concern to the practice. Their clientele are those that are suffered trauma, severe disabilities. The concern being people's short-circuiting to go from the bank, trying to get over to the deli and speeding, and their patrons aren't ones that are, have the ability to maneuver as quickly, you know? And they're concerned about that.
Um...
And their preference is rather to not have that inter-access connection between the two and rather have, you know, we don't, because of the uses aren't typically compatible that of a bank and an orthopedic operation and that of a deli and orthopedic operation as well, it's kinda...
Does the...
But I just wanna add that...
I'm sure it joined to the deli, does it?
But at the meeting we had with DOT, that was one of the things that they actually encouraged at DOT was to interconnect the rear of all its development.
And it doesn't...
If possible.
Does it connect to the deli today?
No.
Is there a plan to connect it to the deli?
There is a sidewalk that was asked at the last planning board meeting, that we have pedestrian access.
Right, what we're talking about is in the back, connecting to the bank so that people could leave your site, cut across the bank, and come out at the light.
Right.
Not, and I don't see anybody cutting across your parking lot because...
So you're looking for one-way access?
Yeah, coming out.
So do not enter from the bank?
Right.
I took it as inter-access between all parcels.
No, no.
Well, I think that's how DOT takes it, but, you know, not that they have say in it.
I could understand that point about people cutting across, if there was someplace to go, to cut through.
Yeah, well, your point of coming out of the bank, going into this parking lot, you wouldn't have the light. If you were making a right, then you're backtracking. I don't know. I don't think you would do that.
The concern is people trying to short-circuit to go to the deli adjacent to us.
Right, and I could understand where you were saying that.
What if you stopped at the bank first, took out a deposit, then you had to go here? And you gotta go back out to Fifty-Two and come back into the site? I mean, that, that could happen if you went to the ATM and then was coming here.
But just the peak traffic times, particularly if something happens across the street.
Well, we don't even know if, if the owner of the bank's site is willing to allow it, so we just have to reach out and see.
We, we, we can ask the bank for an easement, but, you know, I've, I've shared the request with the applicant and, and their staff, and that was their reaction that I'm sharing with you this evening about...
Okay.
Okay. The other thing is, you said you're using the existing septic system?
Correct. The existing septic system was sized for twenty-three hundred gallons a day.
Is there a problem with that? Because some of the neighbors have said that maybe, maybe they were misunderstanding the situation, but they thought there were septic, cause the water table is very high there, right?
There was a problem back in the mid-eighties, and it was due to a lack of a grease trap. The actual septic system itself as it exists is a raised system. They brought in approximately six to seven feet of fill over the existing grade, so in the back of the property, it raises up in elevation. We went and we actually bugged the test pits through there. The soil themselves were suitable. We've ran percolation tests within them. Our overall flow is going to be, depending on how you interpret it, we looked at water usage records from other facilities. We're estimating about four-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons a day the facility would use. Department of Health would like us to double that to nine-fifty as a safety factor, but it's still half of what the actual restaurant was generating in terms of...
And the capacity, half of the capacity of the current system?
Correct.
Okay.
We are actually cutting into a portion of that current system for a couple of reasons. One is to allow for parking, and two is to also increase the separation distance between the onsite well and the septic.
Okay, thank you. And that's gonna be, as I recall, part of that's gonna be paved now? Part of the, where the septic system is, is gonna be paved?
A small portion of it for parking.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? And I'm sorry, it's hard, I, I can't see, do you show the sidewalk?
No.
It's like you show sidewalk up to your building. Do you show it going across all the way to the bank property as well, across the front?
So what, what we interpreted from the last meeting was the connection to the down, what to add, the additional sidewalk to the left side.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I would have the conversation with the bank. Let's, let's see what their interest is in having an egress connection from your site to theirs. Scott, to your point, I, I understand somebody could be at the bank and want to come in for an appointment at this site, so maybe you'd be able, through signage or something, we're sure, you know, somebody you, coming for the purpose of that site, there might be signage or something you could use there if you did make a connection.
Laurie, maybe just looking at it from, you know, the perspective of, of good planning, even if the connection isn't made, you know, at least that this site is developed such that...
There's an easement.
A potential future connection could be made. Let's just say that that corner lot gets redeveloped, and the signal actually, you know, the signal gets reacted or ruffled, and the access could be improved there. You know, it could potentially be advantageous even for this site to be connected to, to Ruffell, so, you know, leaving that as a possibility is, you know, good planning. I mean, the DOT's comment was, you know, on these, on these state highways, Fifty-Two, Eighty-Two, and when we start to get more development, I mean, they would like to see service connections behind, behind all of them because it's gonna help, you know, some of the traffic stay off of the main road, you know, I mean, that's, you know, and if you don't start doing it with these individual ones, it's never gonna be a possibility, you know, and that's, that's what's, we're seeing in other parts of, of the town.
And, and I, and I think from the egress perspective, it makes sense. Once again, though, the concern being, it's good planning, but people may abuse it, and the clientele here are those that are, some of them are disabled, some of them are recovering from serious injuries, some of them haven't even been operated on yet, and, you know, to have those types of, you know, sometimes youngsters do speed through and take a short circuit.
There could, there could always be some appropriate, you know, traffic calming measures, whether it be speed bumps or something, something that, you know, make, make sure that it doesn't encounter their...
Yeah, and I assure you, I was thinking of egress only.
Yeah, okay.
When I asked for that, and it was through the bank.
Yeah.
And with not a connection to the deli.
There's, there's other things, too. Just think of the FedEx guy or the UPS guy. He could actually go to three properties without having to go back out onto the state highway. I mean, that in itself is an advantage, you know, I mean, so...
Okay.
There might be other common services between the buildings, you know, whether it be stationary delivery or whatever, that, you know, might, might service both, so...
Okay.
One, one of the ways you can do it is if the building is situated such that parking for the patients is close by, and at the rear of the property, the connection is, and it just flows along the outside, not sort of like from the line from the mall on Route Nine through Kmart. You can actually just traverse the whole back of the property and not get in, take any chances hitting anybody, but it does make it more convenient to go from place to place.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying from, they have that kind of perimeter access road, which is, and one of our constraints we have on our particular site here being we have...
The wetlands back there?
We have our septic system that goes this entire route over here, and then adjacent to this area are wetlands that we would have to traverse.
Yeah, I can understand why you wouldn't wanna route them for your main parking lot.
Yeah.
Chris, on that, on that end, were, were there any other alternative configurations of the building, the parking, that were looked at or...
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
One of the, the, the real focus on placing the building here is their type of operation. They like to have one access for their patients to enter the building. Their preference is not to have parking that surrounds their entire building. They want when people, individuals park here, they have a straight run to the main entrance. That's where they wanna focus it. For example, their building on Route Nine in Poughkeepsie that they had purchased, the previous Circuit City, there is parking in both the front and the side, but at that particular location, the patrons who are going to see these orthopedic doctors, they're all parked in the front. That side parking is only for their same-day surgery, so there's a separation between the two uses. Their preference is not to have people walking all the way around their building. And they also have a separate entryway for their doctors. They usually have, you know, for, for the building in Poughkeepsie, there's a separate entrance for the doctors in the rear, and on this building, the doctor's parking is right here, and there's a separate entrance for them on the side so they can separate the patients from the doctors for where they come in. That's their typical plan. This particular site, some of the things that we also tried to maintain was, we have an existing well onsite, which is producing great quantity of water and it's of a great quality, and our preference was not to shift the building to the center of the site, which would force us to drill a new well. One of the current concerns I had about drilling a new well on this site is some of the concerns I've run onto a number of sites on, on state roads is the high level of sodium chloride in my water from all the salting that takes place, and then I have a reverse osmosis system which blows out my septic system.
Where is the well?
The well for the site is right here. So if you move, shift this towards the center of it, I would have it built...
What if you did towards the center and in the back?
I would, towards the center and, say, back here, so I would, I would have the parking on both sides of the facility.
You'd have the parking on two sides, like you have now, right?
Well, I have, this parking really here is for the doctors on this, on this portion of the building. So doctors park here and they come right into the building. This parking is mainly for the patients right here so they have a straight shot, but it could be...
But, but if the, but if the building were shifted to, follow where the doctors park down east, see where the edge, see where the corner pavement is down towards the deli, keep coming down east, right there. If, if the back corner of the building was there and there was a square there, you would have parking to the side and you have parking in front.
I'd have a square here.
Same setup as you have now, right?
Yeah.
But your building would probably be much closer to meeting that hundred-foot setback.
If I shifted the building back to over here and had the parking, well, then I'd still have, if I shifted the building here, this area over here would end up being parked.
Would be parking, right? Which is much less intrusive than a building in terms of in the setback area.
And I'd still need a variance because I'd be reducing probably in this particular area landscaping as well. So I wouldn't have as much landscaping in the front if I relocate my parking over here. The other thing this leads to is...
I, I'm not sure if that would be true or not. I think you...
The other thing...
Have you tried it? I mean, did you try different layouts?
We, we did the layout, and the thing we liked best about this is this allows full circulation all the way around the site without any obstructions such as a building in this location. There's, that's part of the reason why the building was located over here as well before was the full circulation around that. The previous, the previous layout and this layout really focused on allowing the full circulation. If, if you're coming up this aisle, you can come all the way around up here and continue to circulate. Having a structure here, I'm gonna have a number of kind of weaving turns throughout. It's not gonna be as...
I don't know why you would. You would have two full lanes of parking that run the whole width of the site.
Well, if I have...
One, one big loop people could park in.
Well, in terms of the...
It, it's not something you have to resolve right now, but I think it's worth it to look at a layout like that and see if you can make it work. I understand that you're saying you need to separate certain areas of the parking, but to me, I can see the bill, a similar-sized footprint of building moved to the, moved further back in the property, down in that corner, and you'd still have sufficient parking and probably the ability to have side parking and front parking with a drop-off point if you need it. I mean, you're losing a lot with the, with the drop-off point, and it seems like, I don't know, I just think you might get better circulation if the building were towards the back.
Well, they require the drop-off as part of all their new buildings. That is a requirement similar to what they've recently done in Poughkeepsie. And what, what that'll end up doing, at least, in, in, in knowing from some of the layouts that we have done, that pushes the parking closer to the front of the property and...
Do you have one with the building back there that you could share with us, just so we can see what the layout looks like?
Not, not with me right now. I have some concepts that we did during the due diligence stages...
Okay.
...that I could share, but I don't have it with me this evening.
That's okay, but I, I think, I'd like to see that because this is a large building, and it's gonna be very close to the road, if we can set it back a little bit further from the road, and I understand the needs that you're, you're saying, but if you can meet those needs and shift the building back, I think the site may look nicer.
I'd like to see it, yeah. Although I do realize with the quantity of material supplied in such a short period of time, you guys really are hell-bent on getting this in place by September?
Their, their goal is to be under construction end of September, beginning of October. They're, they'd like to be operating by May first of next year.
Michelle, is now the right time to talk about bats? No, I'm serious about that, cause you're, you're requiring...
Our kind of clearing would be ideal with our proposed construction period for the minimal amount of clearing that we're proposing, which would start in October, is right in line with when we'd wanna start the site work.
Cause I thought it was like through October thirty-first, you weren't supposed to clear.
It depends, sometimes it's October first, sometimes it's October thirty-first for the, for the date when you can start, and it, it depends on the temperature, it depends on when it starts getting cold enough at night for the bats to go back to the hair natural, and then you don't have to worry about them anymore. It's usually, I think it's forty degrees average or something like that.
Okay.
But, but yes, but he's already sent his letters to DEC, he's way ahead of where applicants usually are at this, this point, and they've also sent to OPRHP. We have not yet declared a tentative lead agency.
Got our response.
So what may end up happening to you if you don't bother DEC is it may go into the drawer of, we've not received any notice of this, this project, sometimes happens, they hold them until they get the circulation, so we should declare a tentative lead agency this evening.
Okay.
And then my comments, we've gone through some of my comments already. One, I did have a question about the lighting. I saw that they were all proposed to be LED, and there was one fixture that was somewhat close to the westernmost edge of the parking lot, and there's, I can't even name it, are in multifamily residence, maybe, behind, like in this lot? I think that's residential. So I was just thinking, because I had...
The end of being zero, because we have full shield.
Okay, so this is shielded?
Yeah, it's shielded.
I, I had recommended it be shielded, but if it's, I couldn't tell if it was shielded, so if it's shielded, that's great. That's what I wanted.
The other thing is, this facility is, is not...
I'm, I'm sorry, just come a little bit closer to the light, course.
The intent is to turn the lighting off in the evening when the facility's not in operation. It'll be on a timer, as I explained at the last meeting. Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays is when the MRI is operating, and they accept patients up till seven PM in the evening. Seven PM is the shutdown time.
Okay, so presumably like seven-thirty the lights would go out?
Seven fifteen, seven-thirty the lights go out.
Okay. Great, good.
So that took care of my lighting comment. Are there any wall packs or lights?
There's no wall packs proposed on this building.
Okay, great. And then, once the site plan is advanced to the place where we're comfortable that it's gonna remain there, somebody should review the landscape plan, so I just, I don't know that we're there quite yet, cause it depends on where he's, the alternative. And just that they, they have to be referred to the ARB at some point and also the ZBA to carry a variance.
With regards to the ARB, is it possible, this is kind of the, you know, this is the footprint that is working for their operation in terms of what they need to satisfy, both the physical therapy, the MRI, and the doctors. Is there a way that we can initiate that process right now and start having some dialogue with the ARB on the architectural...
Do you have the elevations of the building?
Yes, we provided those. I believe you asked to take a look at them, and we provided them.
Okay, then you're welcome to start that, I think, with the ARB. We're just, you, when we open public hearing, though, that's when the, the elevations would elevations would also be presented to the public.
We just wanted to start getting some of their feedback.
Sure. I, I would just like you to make sure if you are going to go to the ARB before we finalize a site design, you just need to show them that there may be different sides of the building that are facing Route 52.
Correct.
If you reorient the building on the site, you may have a different side facing.
Okay.
Joe or Brendan, other things we want to go through?
I think the only other comment that I had was relating to, you know, showing the circulation for different vehicles and the fire apparatus.
Okay.
There were some comments from the Fire Advisory Board, too. They indicated, they're calling something Island Number Five. I don't know what that is. In the site plan, Island Five.
I haven't called out the island, so I'm not sure where they refer to it.
Is there one that has a five on it?
Maybe one referring to Island Five.
Five of the five.
Okay, so they, they were looking, they were indicating that that needed to be removed or shortened, but, you know, for accessibility for the fire truck, for the ladder truck.
Just for giggles and grins, which one is that?
That's the one closest to the building, where they, the drop-off area is.
That separates the doctor's parking lot.
I think he's referring to this island here for our drop-off.
Ah, okay.
So I think they're looking to try to get a fire truck in that area. So you want to just check to see if you got the circulation?
Or.
You don't need the outriggers, too. I don't know, 14 is enough for the outriggers.
I think it's 18.
Yeah, the, I mean, the width of that is, I believe, 20, I want to say 26, or 24 going across there.
Here it is.
Yeah.
Between here and sliding 14. Sounds like they may want to pull the truck right in there.
Yeah, I, I can, I'd like to speak to him on that. Our interpretation of the fire code is up to 13 feet from the building. Does the fire department forward the codes, or is it, forward the comments, or is that something I get from the planning department? You've got them?
Fire Advisory Board comments come through us to you.
Okay.
Gene, is that, that's an extra copy we can, yeah, we can have that copy. Okay. Joe, anything else from your perspective, engineering-wise?
We, we do have a couple of stormwater comments, and then we followed it up with a memo, but overall, we feel like they're pretty well on the right track with the stormwater aspects. It's just some minor, relatively minor issues. I noticed they have another DOT plan that seems like it's going to become part of the set, so that'll be looked at by Brendan and DOT for anything going on with the highway or the entrances. Probably, probably our biggest comments had to do with what they were showing as far as bringing a water line across the highway. One is for the, looks like it would be for the fire sprinklers.
Yes.
And the well would be used for the domestic use.
Correct.
So the, that's something they'll have to talk with the DOT about, if that'll be acceptable to do an open trench through the road, or would they need to maybe bring the line along 52.
I know, on the other project, they've been opposed to an open cut.
Our, our initial dialogue with them on this is, they found an open cut acceptable, is what was conveyed to us at a meeting.
And who did you speak to? Because I like to speak.
Mike Sassy.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Do you have that in writing?
No, I can tell you even from my experience on many projects on state highways, they pretty much put the hammer down on an open cut on state highways period, and so.
I hope you can just get it in writing for me.
Yeah, well, obviously, one of the concerns with a water line, which is already in the state road, almost within the white line, is, you know, you're, you're going to do a jack in the receiving pit. Your receiving pit's going to be eight to 10 feet, so you're already.
Preaching to the choir, so.
No, I, I know.
I want you to get that in writing, that you can open.
You're, you're already excavating half the road, if not, you know, 60% of the road, so.
While those pits would be on the.
There's directional bore holes, that might be less. You also have to wet tap this, so you need the area to come in there and perform a wet tap on the line. So there's really, you know, you got to think about the logistics that comes into this. You're not just putting a pipe across the road, you're trying to connect to a pipe that's in the road, so.
Scott, is the connection to the water main required for the fire flow only?
I.
And is there a possibility to, because if, if the well is as strong as you're saying, is there a possibility to have storage on-site to meet the fire flow?
Well, our preference would be to connect.
The water's in the road.
For a firefighting protection.
It has a greater flow rate than.
Chris, you're saying the water was in the road, but it's, it's not in the road, so I don't quite follow you, connecting to a main that's in the road.
That's offside the road. Well, this, this is a recorded location here, I'm not sure.
But it's not in the road. They did not put that water line in the road.
Well, that makes sense, storm on the shoulder.
So you'd have a pit here, just off, probably protected with Jersey Barrier.
It would go off into.
And then, and your other pit would be off the road.
It would go off into the shoulder slightly, so we would be in part of the shoulder with that.
Mm-hmm, but not the travel line.
But my preference.
But it's not our purview. If DOT let you open it, please just get it in writing, because I'm right behind you.
It's the least expensive.
Yeah, I mean, really, the appropriate, you know, the resident here. And then they don't make you qualify, so you go back to, you end up being a major permanent, go back to one of the permanent engineers in the construction division.
Correct.
Not somebody in the traffic division.
Traffic.
Okay.
That's what we found.
The only other comment here is, you know, obviously, we have some wetland concerns. We talked about that briefly at the sketch plan. We have a neighboring site that is discharging a sump pump and a drain onto the property, which has kind of created a wetland on the eastern portion of our site where, where proposed entrance and parking is located. So we have some disturbance in that particular location. We also have disturbance of.
So, I'm sorry, Michelle, are we, there, there's three small wetlands on the site. They're all, three are smaller than a quarter acre in size, which means we don't regulate them as these fish kill, but Army Corps will regulate them. They're not DEC wetlands either. Okay, so what we're hearing is that, that one of the wetlands has been created by the discharge of a sump pump from a neighbor.
Yeah, that's what, I didn't know that until just now.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
Yeah, 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 no, I didn't know that until just now, and I guess, and which, which one is the one that's created by the?
It's the.
Is it A, B, or C?
It's the, it's a portion of the major wetland, which I believe is in the southeast corner.
Looks like a little spur.
Right here.
Yeah.
Our intent is, because it's creating some erosive conditions out there, is just to pipe it back, because right now, you've got a force, you know, it comes out of a sump pump, so there's a force associated with it.
Right.
So our intent is to run it through two drainage structures and have a dissipating structure at the end of it, so that it slows down to the loss of the discharge.
Further back in the, further back in the property?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And.
Still a permit, though, right, depending on the amount of disturbance?
Yeah, we're under a tenth of an acre from the Army Corps, so our intent is to send them in for a construction notification permit, which is the typical for less than a tenth of an acre.
Okay.
And they don't regulate adjacent area or buffer, so.
Okay.
So I think for the next middle to the town, I do have some comments that were generated from a planning consultants. Would it be in my best interest to hold off on them and come up with those concepts that we had prepared last time to see how to move forward with this? And also have some dialogue.
You say you already have them?
Yeah, I have some alternatives at the office.
We can bring it back in two weeks.
Okay.
To have you just walk through that with us. So I think we need to finalize the site layout to be able to.
That'll work for me. What I'll do with those layouts, we did those in January, we didn't have the survey. We'll put those on the survey and kind of freshen them all up, so they'll show you how the access actually works, so that, we're just kind of guesstimating property lines back then.
You don't have to get real, I mean, we're good with just little sketch plans, that's fine. I'd just like to see how it works if the building's in different areas.
Yes.
Could I ask you about the wetlands?
Shoot.
Looking at the map, your little finger sticks out, you say that's the piece from the sump pump.
Yes.
Right, there's that other larger area that's, and then the property line, it seems to cut off straight, which leads me to believe it goes on the other property to some extent. Yeah, down there. Wouldn't that be considered one contiguous wetland, even though it braces more than one property?
It probably is.
It can be, it's not, it's, it's definitely not, because I checked on the DEC maps, it's not regulated by DEC, and each of these, each of these wetlands are shown with different acreage, and I don't know if they connect in this corner or not.
These are greater pipes here, come off the property here, and.
So you're saying that probably most of the wetland is created by us pumping water?
No, not, not saying anything about.
Okay, just a second.
Yeah, this.
Right, yeah, I understand what, that's what I heard you before, I thought you had changed.
So just to kind of go back, we would also reach out to, try to reach out to the bank over the next two weeks and get their input on this. We'll copy the board on a letter that we sent to them, and we'll try to sit down with the Fire Advisory Board to understand their comments. In the interim, is this something that we can circulate this evening for lead agency?
If we don't have a final site layout, do we end up having to recirculate?
I mean, that could be at the applicant's risk. In other words, if you determine that they need, that you would like a different site layout, they can actually then circulate the second layout.
Advised copies?
Yeah.
Well, nothing precludes circulating for lead agency based on what you have, and then if there is a significant change, then that information would have to be.
Be significant if we move the building on the other side of the property.
You may also want to consider authorizing referral to the zoning board, because even if they move the building, there's probably going to be a variance.
There's going to be a variance associated with the.
The zoning board can only act if the planning board refers it.
But I'd like the zoning board to understand that there may be other layout options to keep the building out of the setback, even though the parking may be there.
Correct. So how about we do this? How about we come back in two weeks, and we review those concepts in the interim. We, I, I think the way in which the building's situated there, or if you shift it to the east, I think the architectures that were developed for this are going to be the same, because they're kind of mimicked on the east and west side of this building.
Okay.
So at least we can get that process going. And if everything's acceptable, we, then perhaps get a referral to the zoning board, but in the interim, we'd accept.
I'm fine with giving you the referral to the zoning board, I just want to make sure that you present to the zoning board that there are possibly other layouts that the board is, planning board is considering.
One other question that the applicant asked me to raise to the board this evening is the demolition of the existing building. Is that something that the planning board can give permission to during the course of the review? Is that something they desire?
Well, you'll need a demolition permit.
Yeah, they would.
As long as the planning board's okay with that.
Right, and I would be comfortable with that, I don't know how other board members feel, but, I mean, the building department, I'm sure, is going to have requirements for the permit.
They'd like to submit a demo permit, but I told them, you know, we'd have to first request permission.
I just want to be clear that if the planning board says it's okay, it doesn't mean you can go do it, you would still need to talk to the building department.
No, no, we weren't going to submit a permit, a demolition permit, without your approval. You know, we want you to be on board with our thought process.
Does anybody have concerns about the removal of the building ahead of completing this plan?
Not as long as they own the building, their property, you know, everything's.
I agree.
Right.
Staying down.
Okay.
Like it'll make the site look a little better.
Yeah.
One less eyesore on the table.
Exactly.
So let's run through a couple of motions here, then. Do I have a motion to allow the demolition of the building in advance of completion of the site plan and approval?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then, that just means that the planning board is okay with that, you still need to do the right thing with the town as far as permitting.
We're going to go through the environmental review of the building and submit the demo permit as we.
Okay, and do I have a motion to refer orthopedic associates to the ZBA for their 100-foot setback variance, understanding that it may or may not be, and they'll present to the zoning board the option of possibly having the building further back versus parking in the setback area?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then, Michelle, again, we can make the motion to circulate for lead agency, and even if you don't do that for two weeks, I think we're still okay. So do I have a motion to declare our intent to circulate? Motion to circulate for lead agency, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, even if you don't circulate, if you want to wait till the third, that's fine, but just that way, you're, you're able to do that. Okay.
Excellent.
Did you want to refer to, did you refer to the ARB, or did you want to?
No, we didn't do ARB.
Oh, I don't usually do a formal referral to the ARB. You can just, yeah, as long as you brought your elevations in, you can work with the planning office to have that brought up in their next agenda.
There's one other comment made about tying into future sewer that may be coming down Route 52. Our intent is, you know, to utilize our existing septic, and that's what we'd like to do.
Well, that's not, that would be an issue you'd have to work out with the engineering and supervisor and have to play.
Can, can they, we prefer not to connect at a later date after we're operating. Is that a condition that you can make of the approval, that you'd have to connect?
I don't know if we can answer that right now, but I thought previously, you were looking at maybe making the building a little bigger if you could hook up to the sewer.
Yeah, well, they, after they worked out their internal plans and the economics of it, 12,000 square foot was the size that worked best in the economics, preserved the septic, but there was a comment that we received about future connection to the sewer, and we just kind of want to have some dialogue, that if we're doing the improvements to utilize our septic and we're going to be operating, we think maybe before the sewer comes down that corridor, we'd rather not be held to.
How would it change the plan if you were to connect to sewer at a later date? Is it just piping, or what, is there something you'd have to do now?
I'm not prepared to have the dialogue.
Okay, we can talk about it later date, I just, I just kind of want to have the dialogue and.
Sure, we can have that.
Maybe, Scott, in the next two weeks, then, or is that too soon?
I can sit down, I can give you a call, or we can sit down.
I mean, oftentimes, what we've had is a condition where if our sewer becomes available in a timely fashion, they'll hook up, and, but we don't want to hold them up either, so if they're not available. So we'll work that out.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Four Corners Model Home on Noah Way and Phillips Road.
Everybody, I'm a project manager for Toll Brothers at Four Corners Community. We're here for the board tonight because we want to modify our model home parking lot from the originally approved plot plan. The original plan had, had four spaces here and two here for a total of six. We want to reduce the parking, actually, four spaces, and just change the orientation of the parking lot this way. Particularly for the model home versus a perfectly delivered Phillips Road. The reason why we adjusted parking, because we don't want to have parking up here in front of the house, and.
That's all right.
And we also have the need for six spaces. Currently, we have about six traffic units a week coming through the sales office, which is about one car, a little less than one car per day. So six spaces is a little in excess of what we really need.
So you're suggesting that the cars would be pulling into and backing out of the spot right onto Noah Way? It seems like you're very close to Phillips Road if somebody's turning in from Phillips Road and somebody's trying to back out of a spot.
No, that's Walnut. This is Walnut. There's an eyebrow right up here, Walnut Road. There are, there's sixteen mile home to right here, and we have.
Okay.
And we built this new model home, and we didn't have to park it here.
I'm sorry, so this isn't near Phillips Road?
No, I'm sorry, this is Phillips Road.
Okay, so my point is, if a car is turning off of Phillips Road onto, it's not Noah Way, it's Walnut, you're saying?
Walnut, yes.
Okay, onto Walnut, we'll correct that in our. If a car is turning off of Phillips Road onto Walnut, you could have a car backing out of a parking spot, coming right into oncoming traffic, right?
No, you're not.
No, they would be backing, my point is, if a car is turning off of Phillips onto Noah Way, they're going to be coming through, and you have about, what, 100 feet there for somebody to slam on their brakes if someone else is backing out, and they're not expecting a car in the road to be perpendicular to them?
If someone is making a left, and I'm precise, at the same time, somebody's backing out of here, it's close. I think it's a safe distance.
I think we have a minimum requirement of, is it 125 feet, I think, for a driveway?
How many feet is that?
Well, it's the same location as driveway.
No, the parking spots are close.
Well, because, because to me, I mean, you already have four spots that are oriented in a way where a car could back in and out within the driveway, and then enter onto the road with full sight distance. Instead, you're going to have people backing out, not able to see what's coming.
There has to be some reason why you want to change the orientation of those four spaces.
So, so why can't you orient the spaces the same as they are now, but put them on the other side? So up against the property line? So somebody would pull in and pull into the spot up against the property line? So I don't have a pointer, so I. Yeah.
They'll have to come in, close to the same spot.
Right, but they would have the ability to back out within the driveway versus backing out into a roadway?
And it's going to cause a lot of blacktop being in front of the house, basically, we have.
So there's no parking there right now, there's no blacktop there right now?
Where's the garage? Where's the garage proposed?
Garage is here. Well, will be the garage, it's now a sales office.
On the side?
It's up, yeah.
On the side?
So it's going to be a side loading.
Three-car side entry. So it's going to ultimately be paved anyway?
Yeah, my letter was saying if it's going to be a three-car garage in the future, you have three spaces. I thought it says three on the, on the little note there.
Peter, what about combining the parking with the model home next door? What about combining the parking with the model home next door? Okay.
Maybe you're talking about the traffic, that you're talking about, you know, one salesperson and one car at that. Couldn't you actually just configure the residential driveway now and use the residential driveway?
No, because it's the engine to our sales office now. See, but there's a sidewalk here going into here, the car garage, that would be the garage, just now, our sales office.
And there's been a sidewalk.
I thought you said there were six parking spots there now.
No, there's no parking there. No, the original approved plot plan, we proposed to have the four spaces and two spaces. But we're not doing driveway here, the garage. Garage is now our sales office. And so there's no, there's no driveway here at all, there's no parking here at all now. Which is, there's two doors here going around.
But what would limit, what would limit you from constructing the driveway? I mean, and let that be the access into the sales office? So it would be like, you know, instead of going into garage, you have to pull up to the front of the garage, you don't have to go into the sales office?
We said we, we, we may be creating our sales track, track. Yeah, we create, we call it track, folks have come in one door here and now the other, going to the model, come back this way, or anything to park. So we don't, we don't want to see everything here coming to the sales office model.
What about just parking on the street? I mean, it really is.
Or parking, parking parallel to the street, so that you don't have cars backing out into a roadway? I do not like that layout.
How might I be limiting their four spot?
Okay.
If those spots are.
And can you park them parallel along that side, so that? Parallel, that's perpendicular, parallel to the road. Have them just run straight across?
Yeah, but with a partial pull-off or something.
Yeah, Wallace.
What he's, what he's got.
Because I share always concern, if somebody's backing out and somebody turns.
What he's got right now is this.
Right.
If he did this.
I'm with you, I got it.
Paved across the front yard, then at least you got the cars off the road, and they're getting on and off, able to view the traffic. You're not backing into a roadway where you're not aware that somebody's coming out.
Can you put a little cut in there, just enough so when they pull off, they're not out on the, you know, on the road?
But you want to get in two cars in configuration?
Yeah, I would say two cars would be, two slots would be enough, just across.
But when they have their kitchen at that, they'll be all parking along Walnut.
Parallel to the road.
Parallel to the road.
Yeah.
I don't know how, how two parking spaces is enough, if you have an employee.
I know.
And two people show up at the same time, how is three enough, two enough?
I'm not saying two is enough, I'm saying that you shouldn't be having cars back out into a roadway next to people zooming off Phillips Road.
But if you just pave a shoulder, I think you only have room for two cars there.
Fair enough, but you can still pave an area here where they can pull in and park.
A little pull-off, I mean, because basically, you know, as John's pointing out, I mean, the traffic on this road is minimal. So just a little pull-off, and, and it accomplishes your goal to, creates a grass effect instead of a parking lot, right? Yeah, that's what we're proposing.
The two are that bad.
Yeah.
What if you made an angle in parking, like this, that way?
Doesn't help, you're still backing out.
Still backing out.
And enough in back of it, just so a car could pull out.
If you, if you're limiting the fourth spot, you just have a free spot.
What's quite a distance, do you have the, do you have the parking on there?
You're not 125. Got to scale, scale it.
I don't know what you want me to look at.
That's Walnut, because that's a semi-circular road, you're not going to back on.
Your index figure to the point.
I'm not saying they're going to back onto Phillips, I'm saying a car coming off Phillips, turning onto this road is going to be always task, not expecting a car to be backing out into the road, into Walnut, as they're coming around the corner from Phillips. They're, they're going to be, they're going to be turning, sorry. They're, they're going to be turning as a car is backing right out into their, with less than 100 feet between where they've turned and where a car now is perpendicular to them.
What do you have?
I don't.
Yeah, but use the parking space width as a barometer.
I mean, if there was no other space here at the lot line, as such, that you couldn't do it.
I'm fine with them parking on the street, for God's sakes.
But then they're still parallel as opposed to perpendicular.
Exactly, it accomplishes the goal. And it gives them the grass that they're looking for.
There wouldn't be a sign on the road, whether it's the center of the lane or the right side of the lane, I'm not quite sure.
But I think we're okay with reducing that parking spot.
Take, take best case, see what you got.
I think we're okay with it. I said, I think we're okay with reducing the parking spot. In fact, I think we're all okay with you just telling people to park on the road. Yeah.
Parallel, right.
Yeah.
Parallel to the road.
That accomplishes your real goal, it makes a lawn effect, right?
So the neighbors.
It's a beautiful thing.
Not a model yet, just trying to make it one.
Yeah. Do we do this with a motion?
Yes. It's a, as long as everyone's comfortable, it's a minor site plan modification? Okay, any concerns?
No.
No.
So do I have a motion to modify the parking, so it is parallel to the street on the model home for Four Corners?
And reduce the two spots?
Just so I'm clear, parallel to the street or on the street, just so I'm clear?
Parallel to the street, I'd rather them not be on the street.
So he's paving a shoulder, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, what's the, what is it, like 10-foot?
Just wanted to be clear.
Okay. I don't think it'll be more than what's already on, shown there, it's just going to be a little bit wider and less deep.
Understood.
Okay.
Two spots.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
If you would, just give us a revised drawing, it doesn't have to be fancy, but just a revised drawing once.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is MAM, or M.A.M. Realty amended site plan on Hosner Mountain Road.
Keith Stoudahar or ZZ Tom is in town? All right. All right, good evening, Keith Stoudahar with Cronin Engineering. We're here representing the applicant, M.A.M. Realty, Inc., for a site located at 92 Hosner Mountain Road. The site is, is currently developed with a approximate 5,000-square-foot building. And we're here, we were here several months back to talk about the site. We're looking to legalize the site with its current operation, which is a thrift shop, which is basically internet sales. The applicant, which is the tenant, well, the applicant's the owner, for the tenant. The tenant is looking, in addition to what they currently do there, possibly providing a opportunity to put a small flea market there over the course of a year. I know I got the comment letters from the towns consultants, and it seems as though the flea market has caused some concern on their level. So I guess that'll probably be the focus of what we're talking about here tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, and if you would, I, I know that the stalls are kind of in the center, and it seems like you have parking on both, on either side. Is, is one vendor parking and the other consumer parking? Just kind of walk us through what the.
Hosner Mountain Road, also on the way, I believe. The front of the building is an existing asphalt parking area, where they currently park a car. One or two cars, it's all utilized for the business now. There's an existing gravel path that goes back to the metal container on the south side of the site. On the north side, there's another gravel area, which goes into the building. The idea here is to provide an area in the lawn, if you can see from the aerial, the whole back of the site is basically. We just showed areas where we could park. The idea was to, on the north side, put three vendors. The south side would be for public access. Again, we show it, parking spaces where there could be a lawn area, that's like a smaller few months ago, where you just park under the grass and go to the, what we have shown in the video. That's, that's the plan right now. I believe we had carved out in our narrative to you that the flea market would only take place between May and October on weekends, and possibly in a case in the weekday, I don't know where that would come in.
But every weekend or certain weekends?
Right now, we are of the belief that she's looking for every weekend, but we can certainly talk about that. I don't know necessarily if that's possible to do every weekend, I don't know how she, you know, can. Get those vendors, we're looking at anywhere realistic, we can do 10 to 20 vendors in the back. The street, the idea would be we would have full-up signs, say, vendor parking, flea market parking, so we certainly get people into the site. We don't anticipate any need for parking out in the street.
Okay, the vendor layout, I thought, had more like 24 spots versus, you said 10 or 12?
There's a ball fan here, we have four vendors, about 16.
But your kiosk layout looked like there was, if you look at the blocks in the center, I assume those little squares were Kia, were vendor spots?
I'm not sure how many tables would be, I'm not sure how many spaces, I just try to come up with something that looks reasonable. You know, I guess the tables would be three or so, like six or so.
Okay.
Each space, which I can identify as being like 16, so this is space to put stuff on the ground, this is space to have tables. I don't believe they're really utilizing all those locations that were shown, just.
But nothing permanent, so it's a field or a leave?
Nothing permanent, just fold up tables and pack your car and go when the day's open.
And vendors staying overnight?
Nope.
So they would be open only on Saturday, or Saturday and Sunday, and the vendors would leave?
Well, the, whether they left the table with the cart over some of their wares is possible, but the vendors themselves would not be staying on site.
Okay.
Keith, how would you advertise, how would people be drawn to this thing?
That's a good question. She does a lot of stuff on the internet, so I would imagine that she would have a website that would indicate.
Okay, what about signage, local signage?
Well, as of now, we're all anticipating providing a sign out here, full-up sign, this is the one today here. The vendor burger here, and that would be it. Wouldn't be any street signs down on the intersection of Hosner Mountain Road and Route 52.
So let me play devil's advocate, I mean, you really think there's enough through traffic on Hosner Mountain Road that you're going to get 24 vendors worth of traffic coming through to, to make it worth their while?
Personally?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, there's, okay.
She's got a circle of people that she deals with, I don't know, I don't know necessarily if she's going to be able to get 20 people on a weekend to then there. This is what she's trying to do, trying to accomplish. But the, the owner is trying to accommodate the tenant to keep, you know, keep her business floating, so that he can maintain a rentable space here. As you may or may not know, he bought this site in 2003, and this is probably the first tenant, right? First tenant he's had.
Everybody else presented to me was just not, not.
This is Mike Maiuzzo, he's the owner of M.A.M. Realty, an owner of the site. So this is the first viable tenant that he's had, and it's been a struggle for him to, you know, keep this, this site floating. So we're trying to do something here that can make the tenant a little bit more viable.
Okay, and not to nitpick on terms, you said the, the flea market thing is going to be the focus. When I read the materials, that's all that's discussed, is there something else going on here besides that, or this is?
Well, the focus of tonight is. I think the flea market is, I think that's causing the concern on the board and the staff.
Okay, so it's not like, when you said this is going to be the focus, well, that's, that's really it. They're really, this is what's in front of us, is the permit for a.
But there's an existing use of the site.
The existing use of the site, we are, we're looking to.
Continue that.
Yeah, get approval for, I mean, continue, which is the internet sales for her thrift shop, I forget what's on the side, but.
That's not a retail site, I thought people would go there as well.
Well, they would go there to probably pick up their items that they purchase over the internet. But she does a lot of mailings out of her stuff to the customers. There may be customers that come, you know, a couple of cars a day at the most would come to the site to pick up whatever it is they bought or purchased. Yes, her business was located on the other side of the creek on 82, and she's relocated it here.
Okay.
So we're looking to approve the current business that she's operating right now.
Okay.
And in addition to that, she is desirous of trying to do the flea market.
Okay, the flea market jumped off the page the first weekend, so, got it.
I understand.
Does it matter if she'll be successful or not? It's a business model she wants to try.
That's essentially it, you know.
Yeah, it's a thought right now.
Right, but if, I mean, she wants to try it, if she's not successful, so be it.
If it's not successful, then some of the concerns raised are, are moved.
But I don't think it's our prerogative to say, well, you should do this because it won't be successful.
Appreciate that.
No, but it is our prerogative to say, how will traffic be controlled at the site? How will we ensure parking, how, who will be monitoring this if there's, you know, if the site, I mean, let's say, let's say this is great, and the site fills up. Now what are we going to do if people are parking on Elton's Way, or, I mean. When you, when you open a venue like this, there, there could be, and hopefully there would be, you know, the crowds that you need to control, right?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Stormville has a plot of land that's huge, you know, it's going to be very unlikely they're going to fill their entire field.
This is not in.
This is much smaller.
This is not intended to compete with anything like that, or the Fishkill Flea Market.
I know that's not, I know that's not appropriate.
Only enhance or supplement what she's doing there now. Whether she gets four people there on a weekend, or a Saturday or Sunday, or 10, or 15, I don't think there's going to be a stream of cars coming in and people on their, in their front yard saying, park here for five bucks.
Okay, so Michelle, let's, let's talk about, is this a permitted use for this zone? A flea market is required. A special permit is required, so essentially, they would have to, my understanding, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, with the, that in order to do this, they'd have to apply for what is called a temporary use, special permit for temporary use per section 19466, and then. And is that for each event, or can it be issued over a period of time? Well, that, that's.
Well, that's a question I have, I don't, I'm not sure if you'd have to do it every single time they wanted to, every weekend they would have to do it or if they could do it for the entire, like, you know, for a season. And then, and then I believe they would also be required to comply with chapter 140, which is the peddling and soliciting, so anyone that was a vendor there would, I believe, would have to also comply with chapter 140.
Is that what happens with Stormville Flea Market?
No.
Where each vendor, I thought.
They're pre-existing, not in a form.
Oh, okay.
And they would only have to register under the peddler's law if they were peddling. But remember, we have the ironic situation in law, we have a stationary pedaling permit.
Right, that's what I was thinking, I wasn't sure how that was.
They have stationary peddler's permit.
Yeah.
But that's not what this would be.
This doesn't seem to me that they wouldn't have to be peddlers.
I would agree.
Okay, so then.
So it's still the special permit for the land, the use on the land?
They would sell the special for the, for the allowance of the flea market.
Is that through this board or the town board?
And the special permit says it's a temporary use, so I don't know if that would be defined as a seasonal use or if they would have to do every single time they were gonna have an event like this, get a separate permit, I'm not, that's not clear.
But I think it could easily be shown to be temporary as long as it's a field at the end of the event and then it's not a field when the event is in session, right?
Well, it depends if temporary is the six months of the year, does that make it temporary? Because they're asking for six months, right, May and?
May to October.
And then my second comment, which was the original buffering, that's one of the conditions within the, there's several conditions within the special permit itself and one of them was to make sure that, that whatever, whatever there was this type of use, there was buffering for any residential use surrounding.
Okay, so do you have the surrounding homes, you were at the Taconic on one side, right?
Right here, Hosner Mountain Road. It's surrounded on the south and east by the Elton's property. And in the north is the business owner's property.
Okay. But this was closer than the Taconic.
And across the street is the.
Look at the sky view, I mean, it does look like the neighbors are a good distance away.
Yeah, I'm sorry if it looks like we're looking at phones, it's actually the aerial views of the site that we're discussing.
Yeah, I can see that area on the map of this, the newer houses, there's a number of houses on the southwest or east of the property.
Are the houses to the north, are those two houses or one house with two? If the aerial shows two, well, it looks like two houses with a common driveway.
Yeah, it's two with a common driveway.
Yes, it's a common, two houses.
So like, what about like amenities, like restrooms and all the rest of that, where would that be?
Well, the only thing we would probably provide on this is a porta potty on the side.
Okay.
Nobody would be able to use an existing bathroom with other vendors. For only the tenant.
Okay.
Is that, do you have that indicated on the site plan?
I forgot to put that on.
Okay.
So as part of this whole thing, the reality is, is really no construction proposed for any of this site except for the reconstruction. The sign out front, which is gonna be only existing oil and plant there, signs, that's the only construction proposed.
What do you got for refuse these days?
Refuse?
Yeah.
Well, the. She's got a dumpster on site, two yard, two yard dumpster on site which we utilize for garbage.
So I think what we need you to do is look at the special permit conditions, make sure you can meet them. Michelle, did you, I'm sorry, you said the code reference and I didn't write it down.
Yeah, it's 19466.
May I, I'm John Zerke, I'm gonna be trying to, if I can just ask Mr. Wood a question?
Uh, sure.
No, I mean, it's not far.
How are you, Mr. Wood?
Good evening.
Just a question about the special use permit. This will go back to the town board, right?
I'm sorry?
If it go back to the town board?
No, the, this board would issue.
Okay. If it was issued, could the special use permit, just as a recommendation, say it's issued specifically, let's just say, say May to October?
Right.
And I know, let's say in Putnam Valley, the way they do it, if the special use permit is good for, I think, three years before it has to be renewed and then, you know, a permit fee then paid by the applicant slash owner of the property, is that how similar?
It would be similar, yes.
Could the wording then be done to some effect like that with this board?
Yeah, I think probably what the board might feel comfortable with is if they were inclined to grant it for the first year and then take a little review because it's, there's so many unknowns, she may not have.
I was gonna suggest that, you know, we would come back in a year and just say.
You know, I mean, we hope it's successful and everyone's happy, but, you know, maybe that's the better way to throttle it.
Oh, absolutely, and then whatever other restrictions and or guidelines the board would.
Because the larger flea market, we have a public assembly law, but that only comes to play if it's a thousand people or more, so there certainly wouldn't be that. So that law is not applicable. And the peddler law would not be applicable because they don't travel about from place to place. And the stationary peddler, so it would just be a temporary use special permit. Maybe we could work it out that we try for a year and see.
I think we would agree to that.
I just want you to look in the, you know, outline for us exactly what you're asking for, make sure you're meeting the terms of the special permit and you have a couple things to add to the plan.
Bye, thank you.
Sure.
And of course, we'll make sure it's not like Putnam Valley this season.
Nothing like.
Then Keith, the only other thing I noticed is it looks like your entrance for the, I'm gonna say it's the north side enters me, encroach a little bit on a residential driveway, I couldn't tell what that, see the roadway pulling off Elton's Way there? I just wanna make sure we're not traveling over somebody else's driveway.
We're not gonna go over our property. This is a driveway along our property.
Okay, the road, see the road that's pulling off there? There's a little triangle of it that looks like it's part of that.
Yes, the plumber driveway on the applicant's property. This is the applicant's property about to here.
So it's the neighbor's driveway goes across your.
Neighbor's driveway goes across our property.
Okay, so I wanna make sure that somebody isn't starting to use that driveway as the vendor, so you're gonna need to figure out because it's yours, the entrance isn't paved, that we don't have people starting to drive up someone's driveway.
We would probably decide right in between, right between the two.
Yeah, and maybe like stakes in the beginning or something until people get used to where they're supposed to go, something like that.
Keith, that area of the site just says right of way.
Yeah, you know, I actually called the survey today just to confirm, yeah, this.
This piece here.
It's not a right of way from that owner or the adjacent owner?
It's supposed to right of way to this property at my likes of the house.
But it's your land.
It's our land, it's on our property. So we own this, there's a right, there was a right of way to plumber over this property, the driveway used to go like this and then it was moved to here.
Yes, then they made their own driveway.
They made their own driveway. So they have a right to be over that, in that encroachment, but it's on our property, so this is.
So you should really dissolve that line because that's what's making it look like separate piece.
Well, I'll dash it. I'll make this a dash line, but it's on, it's all part and parcel of the 1.7 acres of the applicant's property.
You want it to dissolve the easement legally, is that what you're?
No, 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 I'm just saying the way you have it drawing it, with the solid line, it looks like it's a separate parcel.
We'll change the line.
If you just change the, that's all.
Absolutely.
Okay. So add the, you know, add the specific travel way for the vendor to make sure they're not gonna go up onto the regular driveway, add the porta potty, the location for that. And if there's a need to change the size of the refuse bin for the weekends where this is happening, let's just make sure that we specify that.
Yeah, my mic's in the business, Mike's Blue Wheel Services is in the business of containers, so we can certainly, you know, put a five yarder there or two two yarders.
Okay, then the other.
Keith, do you know, is there a permit for this trailer? I haven't checked, I'm just, did you happen to check this out?
I did not check.
Okay, so we'll look into that.
So is that the metal, the metal container on the bottom edge of the property?
Trailer, called a frame building, but I believe the trailer.
And that was all there at the time of purchase, it was all on site?
Trailer used to be on this side.
Well, the containers were, were, were the containers there? There's one, but this building was there and this was.
Used to be a trailer here. Is this the same trailer that was on the other side of property or a different trailer? Used to be a construction trailer parked here.
This is the entrance here.
When, recently, the state, they did the highway, they had a container in front of the barn.
That the state had a construction trailer here?
Just when they did the extension on the highway.
The bridge?
The overpass.
No, the, the entrance to the Taconic.
Oh, the fire, I see.
They had a container in front of the barn there.
What do you say, container?
Like a storage container just for temporary use.
Does this have like two doors in front, windows? Does this, does this have two doors and windows?
Yes.
Well, that's what was here, an office trailer. So is this the same office trailer that was here?
Yes.
So you moved it from here to here?
Yeah, that was, you know.
So I don't know if it was permitted here and then it got moved, so we'll have to.
Were you talking about something recently?
No, I've, no, I've been to the site and there wasn't a trailer here, it was, it was here.
This was moved back 10, 10 years ago?
I don't know, about 10 years ago, maybe after 2003, but it, but does it have a permit period?
Sorry.
As a part of a site plan? You're taking it for granted that it's always been there and I don't think that's the case. So, so if you're cleaning up the site, I think you gotta get that to the west.
Okay.
And then Keith, the only other thing I was gonna say is you do show some, it looks like the gravel driveway right now goes back to a storage box or something.
Yes.
If you're gonna have the public there, just make sure that's, I haven't been back to look at that, but make sure it's secured or whatever it needs to be so that you don't have.
A little locked up.
Issues there. Give us, give us the idea again of the, the way you'll meet the terms of the special permit and exactly what you're asking for and all that and I, I think we can go over it next time.
Okay.
Okay.
Just maybe understanding what the hours of operation would be too, just so, I mean, you mentioned the potential of during the week. You know, I mean, I, if there was reasonable hours on the weekend, I think it's gonna have any, pretend, you know, not gonna have much of an impact on traffic. But, you know, something during the week could, you know, Hosner Mountain Road doesn't have a great connection to the state highway, so.
Yeah, you're talking about the weekday event?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's even gonna be a reality, she asked for it, but I, we, I'll talk to her, we may even take that off the table, weekdays.
The way I, Mike, going back to your question, I mean, the way I understand these works is it's really a social media thing where, you know, email blast gets sent out to different groups and it gets put on Facebook and wherever else and that's, that's how people know about the sale, so that's why it's a little unpredictable that, you know, people are gonna show up. So it's not really passed by.
And I think that's why, in terms of the special permit, we would probably do a very short term type of permit just to see how it's working and then as long as it's working fine, possibly go for a little bit longer period of time.
The north side, did you say that?
But again, we need to make sure we can meet the terms of the special price, so there's just a little bit of work to do to make sure we can do that.
On the north side, Keith, you said it was only going to be for vendors?
Yes.
So those, well, those spaces are all gonna be just vendors' offices?
Yeah. Yes.
And they would not be staying overnight, or if they are gonna be staying overnight, just reflect how that's gonna happen.
There'd be no people staying overnight, like I said, they might leave a table or two, we could put a note on that, I mean, I'll have to confirm with the tenant if that's, you know.
Okay.
Overnight stays, it mentions an existing apartment, I think the fire board mentions something.
Well, there is, you know, at the time of purchase, there's an, there's an existing livable space in the back of that building that the business owner is currently residing at.
There's an apartment in the main building right now?
Yeah, in the back.
Yeah, we went through that the last time.
Believe I wrote that in the letter.
Did you research that at all, the apartment, Keith?
No, I did not. All right, so the special permit conditions and the two other main things are the existing permit for the frame building and the apartment.
And again, just to Brendan's point, hours of operation and make sure we've got all of that nailed down.
Well, right now, I think I wrote, what did I write?
The easement location, make sure that you change, you're gonna change that to a dotted line, the porta potties.
I wrote down in the nine to four on the weekday, weekends. And there may be occasions where the flea market will be conducted on a weekday throughout the season week.
So would that be like a holiday weekend, like a July 4th weekend goes down to a Monday or are you actually saying you do a Monday to Friday kind of?
Like a Memorial Day or Labor Day or?
So just, I think, let's be, let's be specific on what dates.
Okay.
And that way, for initially at least, we kind of know when it's happening.
I don't think she's gonna have one on a Wednesday in the middle.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, just give us a feel for what the dates are, if it's Labor Day weekend, if it's 4th of July, I think that makes sense. If it's something else, I want, I want to understand that before we.
Sure.
I mean, I had a comment about just, you know, some type of stabilized surface. And I bring that question up because I noticed just even for this one metal container, there's a gravel driveway that goes all the way to the back of the property. So I wonder what the soils are like and, you know, because if things were high and dry and tight, I would think you wouldn't put a gravel driveway all, all the way back to one single container for some storage, you would just drive over the lawn.
Is that a new driveway?
No, it's an existing gravel driveway. So I just, you know, I mean, I just, because, and I don't know if there's anything you could do to sort of, you know, if it's really dry with dust or if it's gonna be a rainy weekend, you know, how much is gonna get torn up and dragged out onto the road or, or impact the neighbors that are, just those couple neighbors that are close. But it just came to my attention because there is that long driveway that goes to one shed basically.
I'll check the soils, have to see what we got and I'm, we'll go out and take a look at the site and.
Okay.
I don't think that should be an issue.
Do you have other questions for us?
Procedurally, I gotta resubmit and then we'll come back or do we go back on?
I think, yeah, we'll need time to look at what you, what you bring back to us, just give us the, again, look, the specifics on the special permit and exactly what you're looking for and make those couple of changes and I think, you know, one more discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Do you miss us?
I see.
Do you miss us?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
That was a question, that was a question.
It's all right, Mike, I had a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.